Thank you, June 13th, 2022. Please join me in saying I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just as a reminder for folks online, please, uh, right your mute button. Barbara, I see you on twice and then your box just lit up. You can just make sure you're on mute in both instances, please. So I know we have a lot of folks here tonight who'd like to speak during citizens' time. So just in the interest of being on the same page, what I'd like to do is quickly re-review the guidelines, uh, that I put in place when I became Chair for the sake of clarity. So speakers will be chosen in the order in which, uh, the Chair chooses them. If one or more person wishes to speak on a single topic, the Chair may call on them together or ask that one individual to represent the group. Any person wishing to speak must identify themselves, any office they hold, their current address, and the topic for which they wish to speak. Okay, folks, online, seriously, please make sure you're muted. Thank you. Uh, the Chair will favor in no particular order. Super frustrating to have the reverb happening. Could everyone please make sure you're on mute?
Looks like they are, Nick.
They are? So where's the reverb coming from? No.
I'm not on. Well, I have no audio attached to this computer.
All right. It seems to be resolved for the time being. The Chair will favor in no particular order those speakers who are Burlington residents. Uh, please note this, uh, they shall, uh, not count against the individual's time, meaning you taking the time to introduce yourselves. Given the folks that are here tonight, we're gonna probably reduce the time down to two minutes and see how it goes, uh, per speaker. Topics of discussion, uh, may be halted at the Chair, uh, by the Chair if additional information or discussion is warranted, at which point the Chair may request the topic be placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Individual participation in public comment shall be limited, uh, to once every three meetings unless on a different topic, uh, or unless otherwise allowed by the Chair. Uh, a response can be given by the Chair if necessary. The Chair may also defer a town meeting, uh, sorry, town meeting, town administrator, um, or, uh, direct the individual to the appropriate staff for appropriate steps to be taken. Uh, discussion of individual personnel issues will not be allowed. If there is a personnel issue, please contact the office directly and we'll begin the discussion there. So with that, I open the floor to public comments, citizens' time. On my list here, I have, uh, Elizabeth Grace. If you just come up, so just for everyone's clarity, uh, if I call on you, uh, please come out to the table, take a seat, introduce yourself, and, uh, you have your two minutes.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Grace. I'm a nine university in Burlington, Massachusetts for 13 years. But as many of you know me, as that single mom in a wheelchair around town, okay? I should have a T-shirt, "Single Mom in a Wheelchair," redhead, right? And I was in that wheelchair for domestic violence reasons. Every fall, we have Domestic Violence Awareness Month, right, with purple signs and lights? And it's to help other survivors feel comforted and consoled by this, that they're not alone. But for me, it makes me sick because it's just a trigger and a reminder of staying in an abusive relationship. So how do I deal with that? How do I deal with that? You know what I do? I take a deep breath and I just keep driving. It's really simple, right? Could be a lot more worse things to do. So it is a visual reminder of that time. But I know it's important to the other survivors of domestic violence. I have been an outlier my entire life. I have red-eyed hair and blue eyes, which makes me part of the smallest minority on the face of the planet. This is all relative. I am disabled. I am white. I am a redhead. I am Christian. I'm a single mom, survivor of domestic violence, a rare genetic syndrome that nobody knows about what to do with, and I'm queer. That is why I'm here to speak about the Progress Flag. I was asked yesterday if I am a real gay, okay? I just led a pride parade in the lead car and I was asked if I was a real gay because I looked too feminine. But that Progress Flag represents me. It represents everyone in this community. Personally, I really don't like it, and I don't really like Pride Month either. It's really like too much going on. But at 14, I came out to a very Catholic mother who told me that AIDS was invented to kill queer people. At 18, I left my house with $300. At 19, I nursed my friend who was diagnosed with HIV. And at 28, so 10 years later, I bought my first home in Burlington with my own money, here, and I've been paying taxes here for 13 years. I know we're just talking about the dog today, right? But it's important that we talk about placing these two Progress Flags or Dog Bandana on Havik the Dog, actually named, for all of Pride Month because these are, this is a sign of welcoming and acceptance and inclusivity. It was designed in 2018 for everyone, okay? It's designed for white, black, brown, indigenous people of color, transgender, queer, everyone in this room, okay? It's not a gay flag. And yes, I'm really gay. That's right. This Progress Flag that you're gonna be voting on is actually a racism issue. It represents all of us. And it is important because it makes us all feel safe and welcome in Burlington. Isn't that the kind of town we wanna live in? Like, that's where I wanna live. That's why I still live in Massachusetts. But nobody had a problem with placing a flag or a bandana on this dog, right? The Ukrainian flag, the Christmas scarf, bandana, all of the flannels, right, on Havik? Nobody had a problem. It wasn't until it was the Progress Flag, which represents progress in Burlington. And don't we want Burlington to be a progressive community? An inclusive community? So how many of you have identity statuses that are not visually apparent? Mental health issues, country, country music, religion? All of us, all of us do. In a situation attacking the Progress Flag...
Sorry, I had to cut you off. I let you go an extra minute there. I know you have a lot to say. Um, I do apologize. A lot of folks do wanna speak tonight, so I'm trying to be respectful of everyone's time.
Can I cut to the chase?
You can. Go ahead.
Okay. So two years ago, we were fighting to stay alive and to find toilet paper, right? And so thank you to our essential employees. I think you should put the scarf on the dog because it embodies all of us and it's called tolerance or love thy neighbor as thyself.
Thank you so much. Uh, Jess, and I'm sorry, I'm not gonna try to pronounce your last name, but would you introduce yourself, please? Let me know how to correctly say it.
It's Berandio. Yes. Um, I'm Jess Berandio. I live at 94 Locust Street. I just moved to Burlington last August and I guess, uh, I was a little spoiled living in Cambridge, um, but I think we should all be spoiled with how we feel safe in a community and feel like our voices can be heard. Um, when, so I, I honestly did not even think that I would have to put a request in for a Pride Flag to fly in June because I just assumed the community I moved to, um, was progressive and welcoming and that's what happens in most towns in Massachusetts. When it didn't pop up, I went online to find out what's going on here and that's where I saw a lot of, um, upset comments about last year's Pride Flag. And so I did some research and I, um, found that it was, uh, something to do with policy. Here we are a year later and the flag is still not up, so I would like to challenge that. I think our community has been, um, attacked after, you know, just this current year. There have been over 200 pieces of legislation that is, um, targeting a lot, mainly the trans community, LGBTQ rights, um, and specifically our children in schools, what they are learning, what, um, teachers are allowed to speak. So I think the flag, uh, right now is really important for me to feel safe in this community and also, uh, to be heard because we have been targeted. And it is Massachusetts, but, uh, that doesn't mean everything is happy and, and good. So thank you for letting me speak.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Michelle, is it Wexelblatt?
Wexelblatt, yeah. Hello, my name is Michelle Wexelblatt and I'm a licensed clinical social worker who has been working with the LGBTQIA community for more than 15 years. LGBTQIA stands for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, questioning, intersex, asexual, pardon me, plus all the identities that are not specifically listed. Uh, I've been educating other social workers on best practices for working with these individuals for that entire time. In addition to being a professional in this area, I am also a resident of this town and a parent, which is why the tears. I have raised two LGBTQIA children in Burlington over the last 20, 23 years I've been here. And the entire time Burlington has not been a supportive community for them. But really what I'm here to talk about besides that is the Trevor Project's research on suicidality. And this is available, if you go to Trevor Project, um, uh, you can find all of this. Right now, what we are dealing with is 45% of LGBTQ youth seriously considered attempting suicide. Pardon me. In the past year, all of my children's queer friends who come from unaccepting communities, unaccepting families have attempted suicide. Why? Why as a community are we doing this? And I know I only have two minutes and I'm gonna have to skip most of the data. But although our data continues to show a high rate of mental health and suicide risk among young people, LGBTQIA young people, it is crucial to note that these rates may vary wildly based upon the way the youth are treated. What we can do is to take that rate from 45% to 8. We can take that to 8%. How? Being accepting, being fully accepting, being supportive. If we are not going to do this for our youth, to keep them from killing themselves, what are we doing? Why is this an issue? The, the, the Trevor Project has done their research over the last three years and we are seeing that these rates are going up. They are going up because of the way things are happening in the country, the amount of potential legislature that is happening against them, the lack of representation. If just by having this representation, we can make the children of our community feel safer, there's no other, there's no better reason to be doing this. I recommend that you all look at this research. This research has been done based with metrics that are used across mental health fields that are used in general, that are not just for, uh, this project. They have taken it from other, other places. And they say the number one thing we can do is to be supportive and to be accepting. And I would love to see that change in my community. Thank you.
If you could, if you could send us that data, or is it available on the Trevor Project?
It's available at trevorproject.com. It's right there. The research data is, just scroll down and you will see it. It's in very simple, uh, infographics and you can get the raw data as well. But the numbers are there. They have, they also are in educational system and they have a little further down, what can we do to change this? And they talk about so many ways and things that we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Andrea.
Good evening, Chairperson Priest and Select Board members. Thank you very much for allowing us to speak this evening about the Progress Flag. In my professional life, I am a librarian and one of the library building specialists at the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners. I am the former director of the Woburn Public Library. I can tell you that recently our libraries have been receiving an onslaught of challenges to books, specifically trans-related topics in books, as well as to the programming. And it's happening right here in Burlington as well. So in Woburn, they were telling me about that on Friday when I visited. So the Pride Flag and the Progress Flag are symbols of our community. And having grown up in Woburn and now living in Burlington for six years, I grew up in an unaccepting family, one where I was one of those children that you described, one of those teens. I went to Catholic school where I was told I was going to go to hell every single day for who I was. It did not deter me from becoming who I am because this is who I am. And I think the Progress Flag, whenever I see it on a window in a store, whenever I see it in a community that I visit for a library site visit, it tells me that this community is accepting, this store is accepting, I am welcomed here. I've lived in other parts of the country where that is not the case. I have helped children write so many papers against gay marriage as a librarian. I've done this for my professional ethics. But I think for the town to not automatically display the flag on the common, that shows that it's not an automatic gesture. And I'm really happy that there is a diversity, equity, and inclusion committee. I think that this work is very important, that Doctor, isn't it Doctor Greer? Doctor Greer is doing with your, with our community is extremely important. And I would just like to voice my support for it becoming an automatic placing of the flag, just like it would be for any other occasion. And thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Uh, Donna? Are you, oh, no, Donna, you're here for a taxi, correct? Okay. Um, is there anybody else in the room who would like to speak who did not sign up? Yes. Just please state your, your name.
Sure.
Where you live.
Hi, I'm Sarah Colley, uh, town meeting member, precinct seven, live on Sunnyside Ave. Uh, mom to four kids in the Burlington Public Schools. Um, on Sunday, June 5th, my family went to the Sculpture Park to place small rainbow Pride Flags, um, all around the artwork as part of an event put on by private citizens and approved by the Sculpture Park Committee. My kids were so excited. They love the Sculpture Park. It's one of their favorite places in town. And they love the idea of actively spreading the message of love, community, diversity, and acceptance. They were especially excited to see Havik the Dog, a sculpture on the town common, wearing a Pride Progress Flag around his neck with little flags placed all around him and a sign reading, "Everyone is welcome in Burlington." And they happily added their own flags. The next day, I learned that the flags and the sign by the dog would be removed. Apparently, there was a miscommunication on the common signage rules, which I understand. I also learned that it was a result of complaints from one or multiple town residents. My kids are lucky to live in a time when there is much more acceptance of the LGBTQIA people than when I was growing up. In our talks about Pride Month, I have tried to be as honest as possible with them about the realities of what queer people have faced throughout history and even today. It's not something they fully understand yet at their age and they are still learning who they are, but they know for certain if they are gay or lesbian or bi or trans, that they are loved and accepted by their parents, no matter what. Driving by Havik the Dog a few days after we placed our flags around him, I knew the kids would notice the absence. My eight-year-old said right away, "Why are the flags gone from around the dog?" I should have been more prepared to answer this, but instead I said, "It's okay. They just moved them to the Sculpture Park." I was not honest this time. I did not want them to know that likely there were complaints about their flags because some people in our town are still not accepting of all people. And that they, if they are gay, lesbian, bi, trans, et cetera, they will not be loved and accepted by everyone, even in their own community. I'm here tonight asking this body to do better. I understand there are protocols to be followed, but the impact of seeing a representation of love and acceptance in our town up one day and taken down the next still stings. And last year, you rejected the proposal of a Pride Flag on town grounds during the month of June, while communities all around us have Pride Flag raising ceremonies, parades, and other Pride events, often involving local police, fire departments, libraries, schools, et cetera. So I ask you as leaders of the community, instead of reacting and submitting to the antiquated petty complaints of a vocal few, please do the work to be proactive in recognizing and celebrating the diversity of all Burlington residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room tonight? Uh, online, I see a couple of hands up. Nikki, we'll go with you first.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, thank you.
Great. I'll be brief. Um, I wanted to be here tonight to represent members of our community who cannot speak up or will not speak up because if they do, they will need to out themselves in a community that they know is not 100% accepting of them. I'm also here representing a few of our LGBTQ community members who couldn't, uh, be here tonight. Um, and just wanted to share some of the stories that, uh, that have occurred in our town, um, so that people are aware that homophobia is not a thing of the past and we need to do what we can to help people sort of see themselves in the community and know that they're accepted and that intolerance is not going to be something that we bow down to. A member of our, our trans community posted for Trans Visibility Day on the residence group and immediately was met with transphobic comments from people who live here in Burlington. Also, there are people, young people in our community who, hearing homophobic comments at their school from their classmates, beg their parents not to, you know, put anything on their cars or anything on their houses that would indicate that a queer person lives there because they're afraid for themselves and for their families. Those are just a couple of the stories. And again, putting people's trauma on display is not something that's comfortable. Um, and we shouldn't expect people to have to come and re-traumatize themselves, um, just to do the right thing. So of course I'm here advocating for our LGBTQ community and celebration of Pride Month as a standard procedure for our town. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, Sheri, see your hand up?
Yes, thank you. Um, so my name is Sheri Markle and I wanted to add my voice to that of others in favor of seeing the Progress Pride Flag flown in Burlington. Um, I've been very interested to read about how other towns, our neighbors, have taken steps to ensure their support of LGBTQ residents is not only something that they verbalize, but that's consistently put into action by overcoming obstacles they may face. Uh, I've read multiple accounts that you can find online of select board members taking creative, thoughtful steps to ensure that the flag is raised, such as voting on specific flag requests, determining community flag poll standards, and other approaches. Raising the Pride Flag is a symbol of respect and recognition for LGBTQ residents in this town and throughout the country, including the estimated 1 million LGBT veterans who have fought for this country. In one account that I read, the select board member stated, um, and I'm just quoting this, "Since our town's diversity is a distinct strength of our community, the select board has voted unanimously to fly the rainbow flag during the month of June. We hope that this gesture expresses our respect and gratitude for the participation of the LGBTQ residents in our community." Reading these accounts, you know, gave me hope that our select board in town can similarly overcome any challenges and do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Barbara, I see your hand up.
Hi, thank you so much. Uh, my name is Barbara Martinez. I'm a parent of two children in the Burlington Public Schools and a proud member of the queer community. Our country has been going through a distressing regression away from democracy and headed towards intolerance. Families in Texas can be investigated by CPS for supporting their trans kids. In Florida, teachers are forbidden from discussing queer kids' families. In Idaho, white supremacists in a U-Haul were intercepted by police less than a mile from the Pride Festival they planned to attack. Hate speech against LGBTQ people in online spaces here in Burlington runs rampant. Is this our Burlington or do we aspire to more? Do we choose protocol over people? Or do we choose to be a part of progress, protecting our families and democracy? Our rules and protocols are an expression of our values. I ask that this select board immediately adopt new language clarifying that inclusive language, a sign as simple as one that says, "Everyone is welcome here in Burlington, never again," is considered controversial in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I know we got somebody who couldn't raise their hand.
Uh, Seth.
Seth? Seth, floor is yours.
Hi. Hello. Uh, I wanted to add my voice to the people in support of, um, everything we're talking about here today and representing, uh, Pride. I'm a parent of, of three young children, one of whom is in the Burlington School System, two who will be entering in the fall. And I want them to know that they can be their true selves. I want this to be a community where friends who I have, who are trans, who are gay, who are bisexual, who are asexual, can feel they can come and join the community and be part of it. Most people have said, "All these things much better than I can," but I wanted to add my voice as a father in this community, that I wish to see a better Burlington, that I wish to see, um, uh, a more open and accepting and that everyone is welcome becomes the default in this community and not something we have to fight.
Thank you, Seth. Oh, was there somebody else out there who was having a hard time?
Joanne Fristati.
Joanne, floor is yours.
She muted.
Oh, you have just come up.
Got it. Hi. Very exciting to see all these people here. Joanne Fristati, uh, I'm a town meeting member. And also, um, this is not a subject I speak out publicly on in this town or haven't anyway since probably 2006 or so. But I want to remind this board that, um, the Board of, the Select Board in, was it 2005, four, four, um, voted to allow Burlington to sign on to the lawsuit, um, i- in favor of gay marriage. Our town clerk, our then-town clerk who preceded Amy Warfield, that was Jane Chu, um, she, it was an issue she felt passionately about. And the board, um, Sonia Rollins, Al Fay, Gary Janino, I can't remember who the other two were, maybe Bob Hogan, voted to, uh, sign on to that lawsuit. So they spent town money and resources to absolutely ensure that, uh, gay and lesbian, um, residents of Massachusetts had, uh, the right to marry. I will tell you that I came to the Board, Select Board, to thank, um, that board. And I was met in the hallway by one of the select people who said, "Please don't come in here and thank us. Just, just go home. We did what you wanted." I swear, I swear to God this occurred. So I was, you know, being a good sport, I, I didn't come in and speak publicly, um, to thank anyone. So I just wanted to remind you, that's your history, that's your legacy, and I feel like it's been a trifecta between dealing with people of color, dealing with the fact that there hasn't been a woman on this board for 10 years or whatever, um, and now the flag, that's a trifecta. So hope everyone can do better. Thanks.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak tonight? Chris? Chris, are you on mute or?
Yeah, there we go.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Chris Campbell. I'm calling, I'm speaking in as the Chair of the Burlington Democratic Town Committee, but I just wanted to also lend my support for us to have the ability to raise the Pride Flag and the Progress Flag here in Burlington. It's long overdue, um, for us to be able to show not just people that need to, but all people in Burlington, that we need to be able to be in accepting and open place. Um, it was amazing to see what the citizens did in putting, um, rainbows and welcoming signs all over and chalk over the common, but raising the flag is something that's important for us to do. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Uh, and Trina, I just saw your hand go up.
Yes, thank you. Uh, my name is Trina Portillo. I serve a congregation in Burlington. I'm not a resident of Burlington, but, um, our church is the Burlington Presbyterian Church. And we have a sign, the, one of those lovely signs that was made with the Progress Pride Flag, "Everyone is welcome here in Burlington," because we want our church to be a place where everyone feels welcome and accepted for who they are. And so I just wanted to voice my support as, um, a person of faith and a supporter of the LGBTQ community, um, that I, I am in agreement and strongly support the Pride Flag being raised on the common.
Thank you, Trina. Okay, anybody else? Okay. Seeing them, we're gonna move to, uh, 5:23, which is discussion of... Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move to uh 523, which is discussion of town property as a public forum.
Uh, so, given the uh circumstances that occurred that led us to this evening, and really not assuming that people were gonna come tonight to speak assistance time, I felt it important as the Chair of this board to put together a statement uh because um, well, I'll read the statement. I talk too much.
No one's arguing.
I know, I know no one's arguing.
Haven't read it yet.
Yeah.
Second, oh, sorry.
So first, I want to thank everyone for coming to speak tonight. Uh, what happens on social media cannot substitute for this, mostly because we cannot monitor every post, thread or conversation as it may relate to the town of Burlington or a facet thereof. Coming to these meetings, emailing us, calling us are the best ways not only reach us, but to ensure your voice gets heard. This is a quick sidebar, don't roll your eyes. I personally hate social media. I think that it allows folks to vent their frustrations and we skip out on the part of putting those frustrations into action. Social media is great in certain respects, but don't let it become a substitute for showing up. Get involved in committees if you have the ability to do so and always ask questions. Government, especially local government, is full of red tape and roadblocks, mostly put there by state and federal government. So I wanted to clarify a few things uh about the events of this past week uh so that we're all on the same page, because it's a shame really. This all began because of a misunderstanding of town common policy. When I first campaigned, I campaigned on stronger communication three and a half years ago, and I've been advocating every day since, and we are working towards a communication initiative which will hopefully help better connect residents with the community. Clear communication could of course correct this entire situation rather than where we find ourselves today. Our town common is not what is deemed in legal terms a public forum. We have clear guidelines around the use of the common, how signs and events are to be handled. We have process and request forms, and these are then brought before the board for approval or denial. In this case, that just didn't happen. Obviously, if people were to gather on the common, they would protect it under their First Amendment rights. But on Monday morning, I was contacted about several items on and around Havoc, our sculpture park dog. And I assure you, not even joking, my first question to Jim actually, because you were the first one who called me, was, "Is it on him like a bandana?" The reason this was my first question, and I should actually pause for a moment and clarify, I personally am a process-oriented, rule-following, firstborn child. That's just how I function as a human being, so I do apologize, just for context. The reason this was my first question was because two years ago, as we've been testing the sculpture park, we've been very amiable to how we've been handling that space in an effort to be supportive of the Sculpture Park Committee. We've also been generally supportive of the bandanas. Uh, and as I understand, they are something the artists have agreed to and supports. But because we've been allowing their bandanas, I ask that there was a bandana because we haven't been regulating this to date. There's a loophole in the process. So when Barbara, and I apologize for calling you up, but Barbara LaRue, who's the Chair of the Sculpture Park Committee, showed me a photo of Havoc uh with the pride flag slung over, over his shoulder, I said, "Okay." Try to be supportive during Pride Month, uh, but also recognizing that we've been agreeable with the bandanas, uh, generally speaking, but that the sign and the flags in town common needed to be moved. Process was not followed. Since Friday, the, the flags were retied on Havoc, uh, and they now look more like a bandana, which I appreciate. Uh, but also to clarify too, two weeks ago, there was a Police Lives Matter sign that showed up on our 9/11 memorial. Guess what? That was promptly removed too. Why? Because nobody sought permission. Whether or not this board would have voted in favor of either of these signs is not the topic. What is, is the ability for people to follow the process set forth. In this situation of timing, Barbara had actually reached out to me a couple of weeks ago about establishing clear policy for this sculpture park moving forward. And we're working on that, aligning against what our current town common policies are. We're gonna iron that out, and I promise you all, moving forward, that will be clearly communicated. This then leads me to the flag policy, which has been conflated into this issue. Uh, it extends beyond the celebration and recognition of Pride Month because the conversation is about the policy and a community flag poll. Town Council has informed me that uh by placing a clear policy and process in place, we are no more at risk for being sued uh because we have a clear policy and procedure. So I would encourage this board to reopen that discussion in light of this new information. It has been said by some that we are hiding behind the rules to avoid supporting our LGBTQ residents. I firmly and vehemently disagree with that. It is our job to make the rules through policy in accordance with state and federal laws. It is our job to enforce those rules, and in some cases, we are just bound by the rules. But we ask that the community follows those rules as it's all part of the social contract that we agreed to. Gonna pause for a moment, and uh if anybody else in the board would like to speak, give you the opportunity to do so. Mr. Speo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I want to say thank you for all the speakers that came up today, especially the ones that are here in person. I think that it's more powerful to do and uh I personally appreciate your personal feelings on the matter. So Elizabeth, Jeff, Michelle, Andrea and Sarah, thank you for your coming here today and speaking with us. Um, as some of you know, I'm the newest Select Board Member and um I've long thought that Burlington could do a better job um in recognition of Pride Month um and recognizing the LGBTQIA community. Uh, it bums me out that our neighbors, Billick, Bilrika and Woburn can do it, but we've, we haven't been able to, to find our way here. I know Burlington. I've lived Burlington, in Burlington for over 35 years, graduated from Burlington High School. I know this town. I love this town, and I wouldn't be sitting where I am today volunteering as much time as, giving up as much time as I do to the town if I didn't believe in Burlington, and I truly and wholeheartedly do. And I believe that this town, with all of my heart, is a welcoming and open community for people of all races, creeds, colors, sexual orientations. Unfortunately, life is life and perception is reality. Um, and by not having, by not allowing the progress vibe to be displayed or shown in some manner, through our silence, we are actually making a statement, and it's unintentional because it's not what Burlington's about. Um, I personally know what it's like and what it feels like to be marginalized, to be, feel alienated even in your own hometown. I know full well, I know it as well as anyone. And I feel like in this particular case, again, unintentionally, we're doing this to a certain community, and I'm not in favor of it, and I don't think it's right. I think anything we can do as a town to make even one of our residents feel more welcome, more wanted, more proud of their home, and it doesn't offend or hurt anyone else, we should do it, even if it helps one person. Um, in my mind, that's what makes, that would make it worth, worth doing. Um, also, things like this show the world and our neighbors what type of community we are. Are, are we accepting of all races, creeds, colors, sexual orientations? Do we support each other? Do we stand together? Do we uplift each other? These things matter. Perception matters, and also uh representation matters. Um, all that said, I echo our Chair, our Chairman's comments that we should take another look. I think we should be able to come to some type of policy along with town council. I know this, this also has huge ramifications for us as in that same perception realm. We're making such a push to try and attract all these life science companies. I just, all I can picture is a, a huge decision maker from Cambridge, taking a drive up from Burlington, Woburn Center, through Burlington Center, up to Bilrika, and looking for a community to bring its multi-billion dollar business, and look around and say, "Hmm, I wonder what's going on here in Burlington." These other towns can do it, but Burlington can't. So, and also to echo our Chairman's comments, I think we have to follow process. We have to do it the right way and do it through discussing with town council, doing it the right way through the normal procedures, because otherwise, long-lasting change can never happen. To make permanent, correct and long-lasting change, you have to do it the right way. And I know people are frustrated, and I know people feel like Burlington's turned their back on them, but it hasn't. And I will assure you that as long as I'm a Select Board Member, I will fight for this. And Burlington does and is accepting of all communities, all, all types of people. Um, I think that's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Jeff.
Absolutely.
Jim. Thank you, Mr. Jim, and uh just to follow what Chairman said, uh, I was contacted last Monday by a resident and there was, the resident had an issue with, you know, with the progress pride flag on, on the uh, on Havoc. So I did ask, with all due respect, I contacted the Chairman, because he is the Chairman, and I just wanted to make sure if, if he was aware of it, and the issue came up, at least in my opinion, is it was a procedural issue. Our own recreation department has to ask our permission to use the common. Every, I mean, look at our agenda tonight, use of the common, use of the common. It was strictly procedural, and as both previous Select Board Members said, it was not followed, and that's what, we want consistency. Because uh, wh- what if, we don't know what the next request is? And we want to make sure that we treat everybody fairly, everybody the same, because we can't pick and choose a this group or that group or this culture can do it, but that one can't. We just want to make sure that we follow the procedures consistently so that there is no room for error and that one person, one group, one religion, whatever it may be, can't say, "Ah, those, those, the Select Board allowed entity A, but they're not allowing entity B, us," and that could be an issue for the town. So it's just, it's procedural and it has to be followed. That's all.
Anybody else? Go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I don't know where to start. Uh, the flag pole itself, not the flag, the flag pole, as you remember, I was against the flag pole, and I still am. I'm not against the community. I have family members, my nephews, my girlfriend, my girlfriend's daughter. They're all in that community. I am not against the community, and that's the way I feel this, you're treating this board, that we're against that particular community. We're not. I'm worried what Jim had said earlier. What's the next one gonna be? What's the next one gonna be? And until we get our criteria down of what we can and can't put up there, I was the one, I called Nick and I said, "Take it down. It's just not right because of protocol." And I don't have a problem telling you all that. I really don't. That's how I feel. I am not against your community. I don't think any one of us here is. That's the point I'm trying to make, come across to you people. I am not against it. I don't think any of the board members are. I want the protocol done the right way, and if you can't stand up for the American flag and you can't stand up for the Pledge of Believers, that's an issue. We're all in the same country. We're all in the same town. We're all trying to do better for each other. I run a barber shop. I think everyone in the room knows that, or don't know, or whatever. That's what I do for a living. 35% of my clients are in that community. And if I wasn't nice to them, guess what? I wouldn't have a business, would I? Or I'd be called a racist, which I have been, or I'm called a homophobe, which I have been, and I'm not even close to it. I don't care what you want to do with your life. If that's what you want to do, go do it. All the best, you have the best time ever. But to sit here on this board and make decisions based on the town, what's best for the town of Burlington, when we're getting phone calls and emails from the other side that don't want it at all, and we have to try to convince them that just let it go, just let it go. Or we have to try to convince you, that group of people, just let it go. We're in a position right now that we, I honestly, I don't know what we're gonna do. This dog is no different than a flagpole to me. It's no different than a flagpole. It's just a large shot. I am not against the community in any way, shape or form. That's my personal opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. You good?
I'm fine.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Um, I'm gonna jump to 524, Local Building Inspector Appointment.
Thank you, Honorable Board. Um, Mark Dupell, the Inspector of Buildings, for the approval of Paul Sagre-Green, Tom Minestrano, the Building Department, would like you to approve the appointment of Sean Allard as the next local building inspector. Um, he was currently the local inspector in Drake at Mass for approximately three and a half years. He has an extensive uh construction background. Uh, upon receiving approximately 12 to 13 um applications for the position that was advertised through Human Resources, Sean stood out as one of the finest candidates and was interviewed, and we have subsequently hired him with your approval.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, with Mark's recommendation, I wish to appoint Sean Allard as a local building inspector in the Burlington Builder Department and ask that the board waive its 15-day waiting period.
So move?
Second.
Okay, moving second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 5-0-0. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Congrats.
Thank you very much.
Welcome, welcome aboard.
Congratulations, great guest.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have uh 525, approval, use of the town common for a taxi. Look, can you swing a chair out and just angle the mic for them, which isn't the common? Doug, I see you online there. It's good to see you.
You too.
Hi, I am Donna Gortola. We just want to make, uh, request the use of the town common since September 10th.
Absolutely. Dawn, it's good to see you again as well. Um, gentlemen, any questions on this? You've helped pick them before us for a number of years now. Um, I didn't notice. Was there a, are you guys having a rain date for this?
Yes, we are. I have contacted Bob Chuna from the Board of School Board and the middle school is our alternative to the common.
Perfect. Okay, thanks. Okay, um, well, gentlemen, if there are no other questions, I'll initiate a motion.
Motion approved. Request for the use of the common for September 10th.
Second.
September 10th.
Second.
Okay, that motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? 5-0-0. Thank you very much. I hope you have a great night.
Thank you, and may I also say to the LGBTQ community, don't be discouraged with that town. There is certain rules and regulations and sometimes they seem onerous, but they're really not that bad, wouldn't you do them?
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Hi.
All right, next up, 526, use of the common for Sahili. Do we have anybody uh representing the group this evening? Whether online or otherwise? Meeting in the room, because there's only two ways you can, you can do it right now? No? All right. Uh, well, I mean, we can, we can discuss this without them being here. So just to review the uh application, uh, they are seeking an event date for July 8th from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m. Uh, they're gonna use newspapers and social media to advertise this for Sahili. Uh, they're expecting about 50 people, community event for children and family. Uh, they are requesting the gazebo. Um, annual picnic, uh, Paul, anything else on this for Lynn?
Uh, two separate dates, Mr. Chairman, for two separate events.
Okay, so on July 28th and then, what's it, July 14th? Oh, okay, so two separate events?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, I see it now. So the 14th is for the picnic. So the fourteenth is for the picnic, and the twenty-eighth is just the, the community event?
Correct.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions?
Just approve.
All right.
Will we approve both at the same time?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll take one motion for both.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve both.
Okay, motion's made? Second? Second, motion's made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, July fourteenth, twenty-eighth for Sahili. Moving on, uh... Five twenty-seven, appointment for historical committee?
I have that, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Per the chair, Joyce Fay had requested that I appoint Andrew Rittenberg to an alternate position on the Historical Commission, and ask that the board waive its fifteen-day waiting period, and that would be, um, as of immediately.
As of immediately?
Except yesterday.
Okay. Yeah.
Is that a technical term?
Yeah.
All right, any, any questions, comments on this, gentlemen?
Nope.
Oh, okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment to the Historical Committee as of immediately.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Five zero zero for the appointment of Andrew Rittenberg to alternate.
Thank you.
All right, appointment for Board of Appeals, five twenty-eight. Do you want to do this one too?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we have a vacant seat due to the retirement of Mike Murray, who'd been the chair the past few years. We do have two alternates currently on the Board of Appeals, Jeff DeBona and Jeremy Harrington. And I, I believe that both of those are willing to accept the seat, so whichever the board may choose for that position. And that's as of July first.
July first, okay. Gentlemen, any questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move to nominate Jeff DeBona to fill the full-time position effective July first.
Okay. We have a motion made and seconded for the nomination of Mr. DeBona. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero zero. Mr. DeBona, congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask while we're taking this up, we also had an application for someone to be placed as an alternate on the Board of Appeals, Rob Blankorn?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to appoint Rob as an alternate to the Board of Appeals.
Second. Okay, motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Five zero zero for Mr., Blankorn, you said?
Blank.
Okay, Blank. All right, Mr. DeBona, serve us well.
Thank you.
All right, five twenty-nine, discussion approval Sculpture Park Committee. Barbara, come on down. Mr. Sax, Mr. Buckley, I don't know where you want to position yourselves. I know you're both here in support, so I appreciate you coming out tonight.
Hello, I'm Barbara LaRue, I'm a member of your playing board and the current chair of the Sculpture Park Committee, and the person who's having a little bit of trouble sharing your screen, do you know what I'm doing here?
Oh, I don't know, are you on, oh, is it? It's a Mac, it doesn't want to allow you to share your screen? Oh, okay, yeah. All right, go back to system preferences and hit the unlock, and scroll up in the... Yeah, you gotta put your password in. And now scroll down, see if you can find WebX. Location context. Yeah, that's it, turn that on, turn that on, click over.
While, while they're working out the technical stuff over there...
You have to quit. That's just what you have to do, you have to leave the meeting.
As to what...
And rejoin the meeting.
The Sculpture Park Committee is looking for this evening. I also don't know if it was communicated to everybody, but we got official town council ruling on the, the land in terms of the zoning, and it, it is fully allowable per the way it's currently zoned.
Yep, I forwarded that to all.
Great, thank you, Paul. I figured you would have, when I just... Say clarity for the conversation.
Oh, okay, is it working now?
I think, I don't know, let's see.
Join meeting.
I'm sorry about this, gentlemen.
It's all right.
Share.
It's the world we live in now.
Ta-da!
Is it working?
Maybe we could find a teenager to get us to this thing?
It says it's working, but...
Is there no, like, sharing here? Here we go.
Share?
Share.
Back in the club days.
Two years, those guys, come on.
I'm sorry. I don't understand why it's not sharing.
We're gonna try to be quicker than town meeting, getting it to work.
I know. Is, is the, is the share button there, Barbara, or is it?
She can see it on her screen, as if it's sharing.
Dumb? I don't know.
I also sent it.
Do you want to just have Lynn pull it up, and she can, you can just next slide us it up?
I don't know how to find it. I'm so sorry.
You know, I'm, I'm half tempted.
You have to click on, click on you.
Go ahead. It's not, well, it's, it's also a discussion, I wonder if we, um... You know what, for the sake of it, while, while you guys work on that, let's jump to five thirty-one, five thirty-two, because these are approvals for AMC. You should go fairly, fairly quickly. Oh, Wegmans just walked in? All right, let's do Wegmans real quick. So, let, let's take five thirty-three out of order, Wegmans' one-day record license. Want to come on down? Oh, okay, then sit back down.
Mr. Chairman, Melissa's getting update on the one twenty-eight.
That won't take too long, we can do that right now? Melissa, you feel good about doing this in like, three minutes? All right. All right. Melissa, the floor? The floor is yours, we're gonna jump ahead to five thirty, the one twenty-eight Business Council TMA, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you for the record, Melissa, Tachos, Economic Development Director. This is an update to the board regarding the one twenty-eight Business Council's proposal. And this, many of you may recall that one twenty-eight Business Council has been working on a proposal to augment and provide better transit for Burlington. They've been working for Lexington, and their forte is expanded service, they run shuttles around the one twenty-eight corridor.
Oh, you know what it is?
They have developed an idea for Burlington.
All right, Melissa, one second. John, just angle the mic away from you, and then just go into like a whisper mode for you, please. Thank you. Go ahead, Melissa.
Okay. So with that, um, many people, including our Transportation Committee representatives, you know, Rick Parker as well, had been excited about the proposal. Under this, they brought it to my attention as well, and we're looking for support from the town of Burlington. Over the course of the last week, I just wanted to update the board that I've been in communication with them, and as much as I think we, as a town, you know, support the effort, what the, um... What the whole endeavor has really kind of shined a light on is a need for maybe more of a transportation coalition to talk about some of the issues, because what we're finding is there are different segments that are being addressed, and the larger proposal that one twenty-eight is sharing with us, um, is ambitious and bold, and will include many of these segments, but it's at a cost at four to five million dollars annually. The state may provide some funding, but we would have to, as a town, commit to about fifty percent of that annual operating budget. So in that, in these conversations, um, we've had some conversations, I've had it with Chairman Priest, Rick Parker, that we, at this time, like the idea, support the idea, but need to kind of regroup and really build our coalition before we are able to commit that amount of money, as well as bring in private sector, um, funding as well. We need to really organize our transportation coalition, and that's really the update tonight.
Melissa, in terms of, um, the, the grant they were going for, they're still going for that grant, yes?
At this point, they may not, because without a fifty percent commitment from the town, they cannot go forward, and it would require the town to lead the grant. They would be part of it, but I've just learned over the last couple days that the town would need to initiate it, and say, we're committed to the fifty percent. And I think, you know, from my understanding from the Transportation Committee and the other folks, kind of, that have been in these conversations, we're not really ready to do that, also because we haven't really engaged our other TMA, our Middlesex Three TMA, who wants to be part of this and has done, you know, smaller kind of solutions, but they need to be part of this lon, larger conversation as well.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions or comments on this? Oh, okay. All right, Melissa, thank you for the update. I guess we'll just, you know, hold tight and hope the TMAs kind of start working together, and maybe as the, um, the MBTA starts to do their better, you know, bus network, we can maybe find a way to start working together better.
I would agree, I think that would be our next step, is to work with the Transportation Committee to bring the two TMAs together and the private sector groups that have talked about transportation, Norbloom, Gutierrez, Simon Mall, and really kind of come to the table to see what we can do in a more united front, thinking of the community as a whole, not just the business sector, not just, you know, Council on Aging, but really more holistically, and that, I think that will get us to the next level. It's, um, the grant's not going away, we can commit to it next year if we're in the same position, and we're more, there's a more united understanding of it.
Okay, great. Thank you for the update.
Thanks, Melissa.
Thank you.
All right. We're, we're confident, we have Lynn with the tech?
Lynn has it.
Okay. And then she just walked away.
But maybe I can just...
There it is.
You break that laptop, Barbara, I'm telling you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Barbara LaRue, and I'm a member of the Playing Board, current chair of the Sculpture Park Committee. Thank you so much for your patience, and I'm gonna see if I can do this, because I don't know how hers works. There we go, okay. A brief, brief history on the Sculpture Park. The committee was formed in 2018, it was actually a result of the master plan. During discussions with the master plan, it came to light that a lot of people really wanted to see more art and culture in Burlington. And through those discussions, our founder, John Sax, came up with the idea to form the Sculpture Park. So the committee was formed in 2018. Pretty early on, we partnered with the New England Sculpture Association, which was a, a great decision, because they brought to the table a level of expertise, as well as connections with the art community that we did not have, and they've been a wonderful partner. Our first call to artists was in January 2020, and our first installation was in summer 2020. And these were the, the six first sculptures that I think everyone is pretty familiar with now. Also, from the beginning, we worked very closely with Burlington Schools. Our logo that you see here was designed by two sophomore students, who I understand have very recently graduated from Burlington High School. Also, from, in 2020, students from Kindergarten through twelfth grade helped select the sculptures that are in the park today, and we had students from both the Burlington High School Band and Burlington High School Chorus performing at our events. And also now, in 2022, once again, students are helping select the next round of sculptures that will be appearing shortly in the common, I mean, in the park. From the beginning, we tried really hard to engage with the community. The Sculpture Park came to fruition during the pandemic, and there really weren't opportunities for public events, so we, we tried to do as much as we could to engage with the community, and these are some pictures of some of the... Of some of the events we had, showing people really enjoying the park, having fun, enjoying the sculptures, and... Okay. So, um, so we had those con, those engaging opportunities for people. We also had a contest to name Havoc the Dog, we had almost a thousand entries, and as you all know, he's named Havoc, which is after the retired police dog that you see here in the picture. We, in July of twenty-one, we had a, the Bench Project, where we had an artist from Western Massachusetts come, and he spent a number of weeks in the summer actually creating art in the park, and it was a wonderful opportunity for people of all ages to come and actually observe the process and learn about how the art was created. And now we also have these beautiful sculptural benches in the park that everyone can enjoy. On the fall of twenty-one, we had some, finally were able to have some community events, and we had the Red Trouser event, where we had about two hundred and fifty attendees. We also had the Burlington High School Chorus and Band performing at this event, it was very well received, and everyone had a great time. Then, um, in December of the same year, we had the Holiday Sing-Along, we actually had that in Grandview because of the weather, but we had about fifty people attend, including Mrs. Claus, and it was a, a huge hit. Then shortly after that, we had a wonderful surprise, actually, no, it was in the fall of twenty-one, we had a wonderful surprise when resident Maureen Wall reached out to the Sculpture Park Committee, wanting to donate a sculpture in honor of her parents, Thomas and Florence Murray, and she contracted with artist, what's his name, Dale Rogers, who is also the artist who created Havoc the Dog, and they came up with this beautiful sculpture, which is now in the park, and it's been very well received, it's a favorite of everyone, and, and we think it's just fantastic, and a wonderful way for Maureen and her siblings to honor their parents. More recently, um, the community rallied together to buy Global Warming, which is also known as the Big Yellow Cherries. This was a, a piece that was a huge favorite in the park whenever we took polls, and we always hoped to be able to buy it, but when the war in Ukraine broke out, we decided to step up our efforts, and we reached out to the Burlington community for help. We raised fourteen thousand dollars in three days to purchase this, this beautiful sculpture. Four businesses and a hundred and twenty-eight people who came to the park participated and were able to raise this money, and I think it was really a wonderful demonstration of how much the park means to the community, and how much our community really wants to support the park. On May fourteenth, we had an event at the park that was attended by many residents, but also some Ukrainian-Americans, some of whom live in Burlington, who shared with us about their histories, some songs and some poems, it was a very inspiring event. From the very beginning, we have had tremendous support from the business of community. Norbloom Company gave us our first donation, and that was what enabled us to get started and to have the initial installation, and all of these other community, um, other, other businesses in the community have also supported us. Nivola Landscape and Lighting actually went out to the, to the field and installed lighting for us, it's very subtle, beautiful lighting, and it extends the hours that people can enjoy the park. The two asterisks, Brookline Bank and Gutierrez Company, are most recent donors, and after the next installation is approved, hopefully tonight by you, they are going to each select one of the sculptures that they will be sponsoring for the two-year lease period. So, um, very recently, Town Meeting came through for the Sculpture Park. With over two-thirds of Town Meeting supporting us, they granted us some monies that we can, so we can move forward to improve the park, to expand, to purchase one of the sculptures, and to do some site improvements. So, um, tonight, I'm gonna be talking to you about the second installation, and about relocating Follow Your Heart, which is the red sculpture in the beginning of the entrance right near to the right. So, I'm looking for three things from you tonight. I want approval for you, from you, on the relocation of Follow Your Heart. I'm looking for a commitment on the location of the park, which we'll get to in a couple minutes, and I want approval for the new installations that would be coming in late June, possibly early July, but probably late June. So, this is a picture of where we would like to move Follow Your Heart to. It's not exactly to scale, so bear with us, but it would be, if you approve, to the right of Havoc the Dog. It might not be this exact location, we're going to be meeting with DPW and with Paul Sagarino tomorrow morning, where we'll actually scope out a specific spot, but this is roughly what we're thinking. And he, so he would be to the left of the dog, kind of reaching out toward Havoc, and Havoc is pointing toward the park, we think it makes tremendous sense, and from this location, it can be enjoyed by people walking in the common, as well as people driving by. There was some controversy recently, a contention that the park was, or the sculptures were illegally placed in the park. We reached out to Town... We reached out to Town Council for a decision on that and on June 8th, Town Council rendered an opinion that the Sculpture Park isn't allowed use under the Town Center Overlay District. On the next slide, we have the actual bylaw and if you want me to talk about that more, I can, but I think you probably all have read the letter if you don't need me to. Okay. So what I'm showing you here is why I think you should let us stay in the park permanently. On the left is what the park looked like before. It was an empty lot. No one went there. Nobody went for picnics there. Nobody took their kids there to play. It was just dead space. Most people didn't even realize it was there. When we first talked about putting the sculptures there, I had to explain to people where the field was because no one even noticed it. It was completely bare and empty and dead space. And on the right, that's what it looks like now. It's active. It's engaging. We have events there. People bring their children there. We've had school field trips there. And Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts have come there. It's a vibrant part of our community and it's really beloved and loved by everyone that I know. So we think that it would really be great for the town for it to stay there and to continue to grow. So looking ahead, we have grand plans. We're not going to try to accomplish them all at once, but our vision for the park right now, where you see it between the police station and Grandview Farm, is for that to be like a testing ground. So we would bring new sculptures in, probably on a two-year basis that we lease. During that two years, we can tell which sculptures resonate with the community. We hold polls. We have events. We can see which sculptures speak to the people of Burlington and which sculptures they really love. And through that two-year process, we can be raising money and buy the ones that really speak to Burlington and then move them outside the park to a permanent location that we would work out with you. Perhaps that would be on the outskirts of the common. Perhaps it would be in front of municipal buildings. In the future, maybe it'll be both because we do have very grand plans. We also think at some point down the road, it would be wonderful to have a sculpture walk through the woods of Simon's Park that we think would greatly complement the new treehouse that the Recreation Department is putting in. So we do think that this is a, something that can expand and grow and really be a great benefit to the community. We also want to partner with local businesses. We have had discussions with businesses who have interest in doing this, who may want to purchase one of the sculptures or more than one of the sculptures that we are not purchasing and move them to their corporate headquarters. We also have been in discussions with one company that is considering creating its own sculpture walk through their business park. And we are really excited about that. I'm not sure if I'm allowed to say, can I? Okay. Norblum is considering creating their own sculpture park in the Third Ave area. And then at some point, we think we could have a great relationship. And perhaps there would be other sculptures at other businesses through town and we could have a map where people would come by the town hall and they'd get a map and they'd be able to go on the sculpture walk, go to the Sculpture Park, head over to Third Ave, look at those sculptures. We think it would be a wonderful way to connect the different parts of town and also just to make Burlington vibrant and exciting. So that's what I'm looking for, for you tonight, those three things, and be very happy to answer your questions. Oh, lastly, I believe Lynn passed out to you pictures of the, the next round of sculptures that the committee has selected with help from the kids in Burlington Schools. We're giving to you, them to you on paper because we do not want to put them on BCAT. Sorry, BCAT. We'd like to keep it kind of under wraps so that it's a surprise for the community. We intend to have them all installed within a short period of time, preferably within one week. We'll see if we can arrange that with DPW and then we think it'll be really fun for the community to have this surprise. Thank you.
Okay. Gentlemen, start with, whoever wants to start. No, Jim, you want to go first?
Sure.
All right.
Um, Barbara, John, I want to thank you and Bob, all the work you've done on this. When the first, idea first came to us, I was a little skeptical. I was concerned about vandalism, about people getting injured. None of that's happened and everything that's happened has been good, fantastic. That is one of, this is one of Burlington's, I don't want to say hidden treasures because it's not really hidden, but we, I want, I would love to see it, you know, expand. It's gone beyond my expectations. I, I just think it's phenomenal stuff. It's a thing that Burlington didn't have that they now do, that we now have.
I'm glad you like it.
Oh, I love it. So just a couple of things as you were talking, I was thinking, do we have any time? I know it's asking a lot, but have volunteers out there to explain the statues to people? Do we have times like that?
We did have one event that was honestly not very well attended when we had the sculptures come to speak about their sculptures. We did that during, was it Burlington day?
Yeah.
And, and we found we really couldn't compete with the ponies. And so we decided we probably should do it on another day when there aren't children's events going on, but we would love to do that. And we have spoken with the New England Sculpture Association about setting up events where the artists come and talk about their work.
I meant like a town volunteer.
Oh.
To, to be there to explain to people. I think Mr. Buckley wants to chime in on this as well.
I think he was volunteering.
Oh, yeah.
The Black Ranger.
When I moved to Boston, I volunteered to be a guide for the historical locks or anything in the north. They turned me down. They thought I was overqualified. They didn't think I was serious.
Yeah, I had.
To answer your question, Jim, I had not thought of that, but I think it's a great idea.
Okay. Have people asked permission or sought, asked if they could use that for an event?
There was one time when we were asked if someone could have their wedding there.
That was my next question.
And we said, sure, that sounds great. But then apparently something went wrong and it didn't happen and I don't know why. But we would, we would welcome that. We, we have events that we plan ourselves, but it's our, I think the committee just wants the park to be used and enjoyed by everyone.
Would a wedding have to go through the Select Board?
I think the wedding goes through Town Clerk.
Would those events have to go first through the sculpture, then to the Select Board for usage?
Well, I think that's something we have to work out because we have had events up until this point. And what I've been doing, because I didn't know you had a process, is I've been contacting the Selectman's Office and then I contacted the police separately and the Recreation Department separately to make sure everybody was okay. And with the red trousers, I called the fire department too because they were using fire and I thought that would be a good idea. So I've been doing that in a piecemeal approach, but if you have a process that's more cohesive, I think that would be great. And yes, we would follow that.
Okay, thank you.
Mike?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with everything you said about the park and then the people of Burlington being very accepting of the thing. And it's been, in my opinion, an overwhelming success. We do need to have better communication, particularly in terms of signage when you have an event over there. And we, again, we have certain policy for who can put things up on a corner over there where the traffic lights are and so forth. So I'd like to, the first thing I want to do is make sure we get a better line of communication. If you have sculptures or you want to move to a pad you need to be poured and things like that, they should be directed to probably the Town Administrator's Office first or Mr. Sanchez's office rather than directly to facility staff.
Oh, no, we never went directly to facility staff. We went through either Mr. Sagarino, Sagarino or, and/or Mr. Sanchez. They don't do what we tell them to do.
What I want to make clear though is we can do better at our.
I agree with you. I think we do need to communicate better. For example, I wasn't aware that you had a procedure. I was just making these calls because I thought it was the wise thing to do, to inform everyone. But yes, we want to follow your procedures because we want to make everything go smoothly.
Okay. My, my other concern is, and I think you know, you know where I'm, I'm heading. This is with the Historical Commission. For quite some time, they've been under the impression that they sort of had jurisdiction over that site. When you first came to us, we, we, this was going to be a pilot program, a two-year period, and then we were going to reassess. So I guess that's where we are at this point now.
I think so.
Now, your original request was to scatter many of the sculptures on and around the common municipal properties, Simon's Park, as you alluded to earlier and so on and so forth. Sounds now like you're kind of, kind of happy with the little park you have right there. But we've, we're completely pulling the rug out from underneath the Historical Group if, by allowing this.
May I?
I'm suggesting it's a, it's a fairly sizable site and I think there's, I'd like to think that there's room for everyone over there to, to participate. I, by approving this, what you have here, I, I think leaves no room for the Historical Group to do some of the projects that they had in mind. Now, whether or not they can actually complete them or not is, is of some question. But I'd like to give them that opportunity. And if they can't, then we'll, you know, expand the sculptures.
Mr. Chair, may I respond?
Sure.
Thank you. A few things. Yes, you're right. We do like the park. We weren't sure how it'd work out, but the benefit of this little park, even if we do intend to expand, is that it turns out it's a great gathering place and families can go there and kids can run around and it's really safe and we can have events there. So it actually turned out, although we didn't know it at the time, to be the ideal location. So yeah, we, we do love it and we'd like to stay. I do know that the Historical Commission would like to do something else with the property. We have reached out to the Historical Commission. We asked if they would like to appoint members to our committee and they declined. We offered them the opportunity to display some of their pieces because they do have some really beautiful pieces that are like sculptures in a way, like the rake that's there. And we want to work with them on those things. Up until this point, they have declined to work with us, but we are open to doing so at any time in the future when they want to. I think from what I've heard, that the Historical Commission wants to do now has to do with planting crops, which I think would be something that would be difficult to exist with something else because they would, by design, take up most of the space. I think that, that is obviously a decision for the Select Board, but I would argue that, that this is a proven project. This, this has proven itself. People love it. People engage with it. People enjoy it. If you plant crops there, what are people going to do with that? And what is it going to look like nine months out of the year? This is New England. So the crops are only growing and looking good from maybe the end of June to October. And the rest of the year, what happens with that property? So I understand what you're saying and when you, if you make the decision that I'm asking you to make and allow us to stay so that we feel comfortable now investing the money that Town Meeting gave us to improve the site, which I meant to talk about and I forgot to do that, what we want to do is fix the entry to make it ADA compliant, smooth it out and create a path that goes to a bench that would be an ADA compliant bench, but also have an extended cement pad so someone with a wheelchair could sit next to the bench and everyone could enjoy the park together. But for us to invest in that, we need to have some assurance that we're not going to get kicked out. So it, it's a tough decision for you. I understand you have to weigh different needs from different community, community members. But I am contending that the park has been a great asset to the town. And there was nothing there before and no one had any interest in that property before until we did something with it. And I think, I think what we've done there is phenomenal. And I think that the people of Burlington would be really upset if it went away to be replaced by nothing.
There has, the town has had an interest in that site for municipal purposes, potential.
For what?
Potential municipal purposes.
Okay. I wasn't aware. I don't know what those would be.
Or something.
Oh, a police station.
Maybe.
Well, you know what? I know that we need a new police station.
Anything, anything permanent on that site, I think the board would have to think long and hard about.
Well, I mean, there are different levels of permanence as well, Mr. Runyon, for example.
So listen, what about proposing and subdivide the site or something or make sense that, that type of meeting in the minds or compromise or something? I'm not willing to just turn over the site to the Sculpture Park Committee without some consideration for the Historical Committee.
I, I have great, great respect for the Historical Commission and I want to work with them. Unfortunately, I don't think that they want to work with us. I'm happy to have them work with us. I'm happy to have them display artifacts in the park. And we would be, we would be happy to provide signage for them and include them in our marketing and brochures because I think those two things can be married very well together. I think they complement each other.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment on that?
Yeah, Mr. Buckley, quickly and then I want to get to the rest of the board.
Just, Mike, just this morning, I met with a representative from the, I mean, from the Historical Commission. I think you have to look at this as on two levels. One is when you try to create a sense of vibrancy, you want it, you have to have it consolidated. It has to be in a, in a tight area until it maybe morphs into something bigger. And I, I think that's a stage right. Clearly, if down the road there are municipal purposes, everything gets adjusted. What I suggested to this representative of the Historical Commission is I would submit that what a farming tract there would not be welcoming to the town. And they do have one over at, is it Wildwood, the community garden or?
Francis Wyman.
Francis Wyman. And, and so that's, that, that is one option. But as I pointed out to the representative I met with today, I said, look, if you want to engage and encourage more participation on the, on the Historical Commission, one way of doing it is to leverage the Sculpture Park by showing some of your artifacts and working together that you could have a demonstration so people would understand what the Historical Commission does, what they have and how they can get more information. And in today's world, between Q, what are they called, QR codes and stuff, you could get a lot of information out very quickly. And it would seem a way to bring different competing groups into a synergy that would allow something that has in two years achieved a lot of community acceptance. And as I pointed out, leverage this to great, to educate people about what you do and perhaps as, as things morph. And it wasn't, it wasn't denied. I mean, it was, I, the impression I got was, oh, we'd like to do that. But we've met with the Historical, at least I've met with them on a number of occasions. And, and sometimes there has to be a dose of reality. I mean, no one's going to stroke a check for a million dollars. And that's, every time the request I get is, is in those numbers. And I, I had enough time raising, you know, money for this and now that it's got a, a vibrancy, it, it's going to take care of itself. What I'd hate to see, and I think I made this comment before, the ways and means, that if you pause it or you lose the, the, the activity and the, the, the interest, community interest, you're going to wind up, people just will dissipate and, and the people that have done it to date will just go away and it will stagnate and you'll lose this opportunity. I do think over time, what's happening here will be exported around, around the community. And what's very interesting, I've been contacted by a number of other communities wanting to know how it was done. And I feel compelled to speak, I'm not a Burlington resident, but I was on the Master Plan Committee. I strongly believe that Burlington needs a, an identity that is diverse and cultural diversity is good for the community and it's a very positive and attractive recruiting tool when you're trying to get first-class, world-class businesses to come here because their employees demand that type of activity.
Thank you, Mr. Buckley. Thank you. Mr. Marandy?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I agree with both Jimmy and Mike. I think the park is fantastic. I think it's great. I love seeing the people up there. I have no problem with the hot sculpture being moved over. I have no problem with the, the new sculptures that you're looking at. I think they're great. I do have a problem with the, with the other one, with the permanent. I don't like the word permanent. It's supposed to be forever. If we give it to you now, then we take it away from you because we need a new police station or we need something else. There'll be an argument about that. So right now, my thought process is to take the park, put half the stuff on the common. They could be great. They'd be great on the common.
Move all of them out of the park?
Not all of them, but some of them. Some of them over there for now. I wouldn't, that wouldn't. that wouldn't faze me at all. I mean, people who drive by, they can see them when they drive by, on, uh, Game Street, um, I think that the park has done a wonderful job up there, um, except for the last issue we just had to think about, but anyway, um, I think, I think that the, the park has done a great job up there, I think where it is, a lot of people don't see it, a lot of people miss it, that drive by, they don't even realize it's there, there's a lot of people in town that don't know it's there that I've talked to, um, by moving some of them over to the common, and the word permanent, if we say yes on the permanent, and then in three years from now, we decide to make the police station bigger, now we have to take it away from you.
I, I understand what you're saying.
I'd rather not give it out, that way they don't have to worry about it.
I understand what you're saying, Mr. Marandy, I'm not sure what we achieve by moving some of the sculptures out, although we do want to eventually do that, we do think that there is some benefit to having a massing right now, so that it doesn't look too, um, empty, and if you have few sculptures in there, and then have them scattered out, there's no cohesiveness to it, but I do think that eventually is the goal. The reason why we're looking for some commitment from the Select Board is because we want to spend some money on the property. Um, Town Meeting gave us money, and we think it's important to make that space open and welcoming to everyone, and right now it isn't. It's not someplace I would bring my eighty-five-year-old mother, because I think she's gonna trip and fall over that really uneven entrance, and I, would make me nervous. For anyone who has mobility issues, very difficult to get in there. So we really want to do that, so that everyone can enjoy the park, but it's a significant expense, not a million dollars, but it's significant to us, and we wanna make sure that if we spend that money on the park, that we're able to stay, maybe not forever, nothing's forever, but perhaps we could come to some kind of agreement as, of like a, a longer-term lease, even though we don't pay for it.
Can I ask a question? Um, I'm thinking that, um, if it came to pass that that would be the logical new place for the, uh, police station, that there would have to be big changes in zoning, because clearly, you know, there was a question if our sculptures were too permanent to be allowed, it, Town Council says they are, but I'm pretty sure that big changes in zoning would have to happen to allow the police station, that would probably, so what I'm thinking is, yeah, I mean, if that level of change is gonna happen, I would think that the Sculpture Park would say, "Okay," and move elsewhere. Uh, we just want to, uh, a, and I agree with you, by the way, that, you know, from the very beginning, I felt that the committee fell in love with that place, 'cause it was quiet and sheltered. We looked at all the places, and I personally originally envisioned something closer to 3A, so that that ten thousand cars a day would see those sculptures, which they don't in the current location, but the committee loved that space, and the committee made the decision. Um, if the police station moves over there, then it clearly has to go, so I would simply say, if you could give us some wording, and by the way, if there's a police station moves over there, Nixon, the Historical Garden, right, I mean, that's, that's not, you know, so I would say, if you can just give us some wording that gives us right to use it until such time as the police station might actually move there, that's all we really want.
I can tell you this, Ms. Sax, I can tell you this right now, I think this board right here is never gonna tell you to move out.
Well, I mean, honestly...
I can tell you that right now, I don't think this board's gonna tell you to move out, but as far as wording goes, I don't know what the, I had to talk to Mr. Sagorino and our chairman over here, what the wording would be, I mean, I really can't see this particular board saying, or any other board, to be honest with you, whether we get voted in or out, however it works, I don't think that anybody's gonna say, "You guys, let's go." Eighty-six, let's go, get it out of there, you know what I mean?
Just some, some wording that would make it a little bit more, yeah.
Great point, Joe.
So, so here's the deal, we're not, we're not, if you, if you, if the town needs that property for a police station, we're not gonna wanna stand in your way, but are we gonna leave to see nothing go there, and have it turn into an empty lot again? That I'm gonna fight for. So I think that John has a good point, if we can come up with wording that says, "Until such time that the town needs it for the police station or some other vital new municipal purpose," I think we'd be okay with that.
Yeah, just, 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 just a little soft...
I wanted to bring up the fact, that's all.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good idea.
What?
We can make a conditional approval, make a...
All right, yeah, but when we get to the motions, I wanna make sure we hear from the whole board, we've, it's great that we're having the discussion, I appreciate it, but I wanna make sure everyone gets a chance to say something. Is there anything else you wanna add?
Nah.
No, you got it? All right, Mike, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I'll keep my comments quick, 'cause I know a lot of, uh, what has been said, I agree with, big fan of Sculpture Park, very thankful for your efforts. I have, like my colleague, Mr. Marandy, said, "I have no problem with the relocation, or the approval of a new sculpture installation, no, no issues." I do have a problem with making anything permanent here in Burlington, um, I'm very concerned about, um, our police station, we desperately need a new police station, we need it fast. Um, if you've ever wanna know why, ask Chief Brown to give you a tour of that building, and he's given me an extensive tour, and, um, I think we need a police station that fits the professionalism of our town police force. So I'm very concerned and very worried about finding the right place for that, um, and I think that should be one of our priorities as a board, uh, to get that police station up and built and rolling, but in this case, particular case, we're talking about Sculpture Park, I would be open to maybe extending the two-year term for another two years to see how it goes, and keep it going, and we're not gonna build a police station in two years, I would have no problem with that, and also like to see maybe, maybe a subcommittee meeting with members of the Historical Association and the planning, um, I mean, the Sculpture Park Committee, and see if we can kinda all kinda get on the same page and work together, and I'd be happy to sit in as a representative of the Select Board, or one of the Select Board members to come, and just, I feel like there's tension there, and there shouldn't be, I think we're all on the same team, we all love Burlington, we all want Burlington to be great, I think we should just kind of all get on the same page, and again, um, I'm no issue with, except for the permanent part. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman?
So, my turn.
Okay.
He said, he said selfishly, he said selfishly. Um, so, yeah, you know, just to kinda cover off a bunch of things that we're talking about, 'cause I think that Joe's right, this, this board is vehemently in favor of what's been happening up there, and thanks to the committee, Sculpture Park Committee, for doing everything that you've done, um, I think it's important for the public to know that, you know, we have someone from Planning Board, we have someone from Select Board, we have someone from Town Meeting, we have someone from the Rec Commission, we have a lot of, we have representation from the business, we have representation from the schools, we have this representation, um, because it's, it's something that brings us all together, um, and, you know, it's, it's not like there's just like two people in a room making decisions, this is, this is very much a community decision. Um, I'd love to see, I mean, to the point, you know, someone had made, um, you know, having field trips up there, right, where we could explain the sculptures to the, to the kids, to the kids of Burlington, right? Um, I mean, in event for the public to come is great, but to be able to, to utilize it for the schools, I think is even better, because you have a built-in audience, um, you know, just like people were coming to watch the, the benches be built. Um, we can, we can definitely circle back on as we decide the longevity of the park, how the policies are gonna function, and Barbara, I think that maybe you and I could sit down and, you know, work on that.
Absolutely.
And then, you know, bring it back to the Select Board for, you know, discussion, review, and a, and a hopeful vote. Um, you know, we, I, I feel like I've, I've been saying this since day one, you know, from two years ago, I don't, I don't view Historical as different from Sculpture Park, I view it all as cultural, um, it's all cultural, so, you know, I mean, in the grand scheme of things, however we can, you know, make the, the town common area more vibrant culturally speaking in that context, I think is great. I think getting folks from the Sculpture Park to the museum, um, you know, is, would be a, a wonderful thing, you know, like, I, I can see, you know, field trips that split their time between the two, right, because they are walkable, right, and you get to have, you know, picnics on the common, like, I mean, it's all right there, where we, we preserve this space, and we do these things for the community, that's, we can drive through it and go, "There's the common," right, but, you know, so that we can stop and enjoy these things, all these things, not just sculptures, and not just, you know, old haymakers, or wherever else, you know, uh, I'm not downplaying what the Historical Commission does, I just, I don't know what else you've, you've gotten there, um, you know, but I think it's all relevant from a cultural perspective, so, um, you know, yeah, how do we wanna word a motion in terms of allowing the Sculpture Park a stay? You know, we can, we can talk that through tonight, I very much think that, you know, we need to get back in a room with representatives of the, of the Historical Commission, and have a conversation with them, um, about that space, I know that the Sculpture Park Committee is amenable to that.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
So we should, we should definitely plan to do that. Um, as the chair of this board, I would like to see, uh, even if just in, um, you know, a version-one state, what your grand plans are. Uh, Mr. Sax, I know that when we first conceived of this, when you first conceived of this, you had that grand plan kind of loosely, I think that, you know, and again, like, I, I mean, I also speak as the representative of the Select Board for the Sculpture Park Committee, so I think that we should all just kinda, you know, circle up and have that conversation, um, you know, because I think that as we, as we look to hopefully partner with Historical Commission, as we look to, you know, as we look five years down the road, we wanna know what that looks like, so that we can plan for a, a little bit of now, and a little bit of later. Um, thank you for the presentation, um, I will say, uh, I'm not in love with all of the new sculptures, but that, I think that's the beauty of art, is that it's subjective. There are a couple here that I just, I, I think are just fantastic, uh, and then there are some that I'm like, eh, but, you know, again, that's, you know, I'm not gonna...
Me too, Nick.
Yeah, I mean, you know, hey, look, you, you, you got the kids involved, you know, there were, there were a slew of submissions, um, you know, so I mean, it's, it's not like, again, i- it wasn't an N of two that just said, "Yeah, yeah, these three are, we like these," right? Um, okay, so with that, um, gosh, Joe, I, I feel like when you went through the list of the three, like, you're, you're kinda on the mark here, so what I'd like to do is, um, if someone would entertain, I'll, I'll entertain them, but if someone wants to, uh, take out one and three, and then circle back to two for some more conversation...
I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, number one and number three.
Can you, wait...
And number two will be up for discussion with...
Is number one relocation and number three?
Sorry, Barbara, so just, just to be...
Number one is the approval relocation for the heart sculpture.
Thank you.
And number three is approval, uh, new sculpture installations.
Thank you.
Okay, and number two will talk about...
I understand.
Can I say one quick thing? Uh, I just want, I just want, uh, particularly if anybody from Historical, and by the way, I built their new webpage, I'm not opposed to historical preservation, I'll tell you the truth, the one object in that park that tugs at my heart the closest is that rake, because as a boy, I rode on a rake like that behind a John Deere tractor that my brother pulled, and we raked the hay on that thing. I loved that thing, and I'd like to see more of that thing, and I think if you could facilitate us working with Historical to get over this bitterness, it would be a huge step in the right direction, 'cause I offered to put a sign there, every one of those sculptures has a sign with a QR code that leads to a page of our website with video that tells you about it. I'll do that for that sculpture.
And we can, I'm not trying to cut you off, but we can have that conversation, absolutely.
Yeah, so I just wanna say that...
I think that's what you're, you're hearing that from the board, you know, we're not here to, you know, we're, we're all on the same page, I think, so...
What I think, John, what John and I want you to know is that we don't see ourselves as in competition with the Historical Commission, we want to work with them.
That's great to hear.
If you could facilitate that meeting, we would appreciate it.
Excellent, all right, we've got a motion on the table, it's been seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Okay, five, five zero zero to relocate, follow your heart, and the approval of the new sculptures as presented in the secret packet.
That's right, no showing anyone, gentlemen.
So...
Mr. Chairman, can I just get a sense of the board on the improvements that Barbara went through, uh, in regards to the park, opening the, um...
Oh, yeah, I mean, look, you know, I, I, I'm not gonna say in, in the way of the will of Town Meeting, they, they approved the funds to make those improvements, so...
Well, that's tied to the, I don't want, okay, I shouldn't use the word permanent, clearly that's not a good word, but that's tied to our ability to have some assurance that we can stay for a while, because it doesn't make sense for us to invest money in that property if we're going to have to pick up and leave in a year or two. I, I think that it's very clear that if the town has a need for that property, for some municipal need, we're gonna leave, I mean, that's, that's, and if you can find the way to word that, we're, we are very open to that.
All right, so, so gentlemen, knowing that Town Meeting approved the funding for the improvements, does anybody have, you want to discuss some language?
Well, I think I have a motion that contains the language...
Okay.
...that suffice, and if I get a second, fine, if I don't, no big deal, but I'd make a motion, approve number two, making the park permanent, in Burlington, permanent park of Burlington, with the condition that it can, the approval can be revoked if the land is needed for other municipals', uh, use. I don't know if that's...
Thoughts?
Nope, all right.
All right, so sticking with the word permanent. So...
So we've already approved one and three, right?
Correct.
This, as, as we know right now, you're gonna meet with the Sculpture Park Committee, you're gonna sit down and discuss it, they're gonna try to bring in the, um, Historical Commission, right?
Mm-hmm.
So we'll just let it go at that, and then we'll go from that point. We're not gonna, we're not gonna, it's got, it's not, the police station's not going up two, in two years, you know what I mean? And I understand they don't wanna spend the money right now.
Right.
So then, that's up to them.
So, so knowing that, that Town Meeting, uh, approved the improvements, do we wanna say that we're gonna give them two, three more years at such time as the, well...
Chairman, how about, I would suggest after we have our meeting tomorrow, we can double back with the board and talk about the improvements and the proposed cost of it, just, uh, make a determination in terms of, you know, how much should be spent, how soon, whether the investment should be made, based upon the amount of cost of the improvements.
Yeah, I'd, I'd actually like to see exactly what the improvements are, do they affect any of our infrastructure, does DPW want an opportunity to review them, I mean, it...
No, I think it was just a walkway and a bench, correct?
It's a walkway and a bench, but we are meeting with, with DPW and Mr. Sagorino tomorrow morning to sort of walk through where everything would go, I can describe it to you a little, you know, roughly, but I, eventually we would have to go and have something drawn up, and if you want, we could come back for, before you, to show you that plan, um, but I am very reluctant to commit the, we've been, I've been given a rough estimate, very rough estimate, of about ten thousand dollars to do everything we needed to do. I am reluctant to spend that much money if we're gonna have to leave in two years, so I would...
We won't know that till the next meeting.
Pardon me?
We won't know that till the next meeting, after you walk through and find out what you're gonna spend, and the next meeting, we can vote on it, we can decide what we're gonna say, what the wording's gonna be.
Oh.
Not like it's not gonna happen tomorrow, you're not gonna build that tomorrow, we're not gonna give it up to you tomorrow.
No, we are not.
So with the next meeting we have, you come in at the next meeting, and we'll make a decision at that point.
I understand that, what I'm not sure of is, perhaps I'm misunderstanding, 'cause I didn't think it was the actual plan, or the cost of the plan, that is spurring your reluctance to commit. I thought it was a mixture of two things, one, the concern that you may need the land for a municipal use, and two, the fact that there is another committee in town that would like to use the land. Um, so I don't think that anything's gonna change about those competing interests. We have told you, the Sculpture Park Committee has told you, if there's a municipal need, tell us to leave, we'll leave, and we want to work with the Historical Commission to use this space harmoniously. Um, if you want us to wait, we can wait, I just don't understand what benefit we gain from that, because the plan that we come up with tomorrow isn't gonna resolve either of the questions in your mind.
Yeah, no, I mean, go ahead, Joe.
So if we come up with a criteria that is gonna be two-year commitment for you, that's not enough time for the Sculpture Park Committee, right? Is this a simple yes or no?
I'd be looking for five years.
Okay, and in three years from now, we decide we're gonna put a police station up there, and we tell you, you've done it three years, what happens then? You spent the money anyway.
You're putting it in the mun, in the wording that if it's for a municipal need, we would have to go, and, and that's the...
Like I said, the next meeting, I'll make that decision, right now, I'm not ready to make that decision, be personally.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to wait until tomorrow's meeting, so we can hear the results.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I'm not ready to act on that tonight, then.
Okay.
Okay, so when is your next meeting?
Our next meeting is June twenty-seventh, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
So you want us to come back on June twenty-seventh, after having met with DPW and Mr. Sagorino, we could give you the plan of where the path would go, we may not have, you know, drawings of it yet, but we could probably give you amateur drawings of it, so that you know where the bench is going and where the path is going. so that you know where the bench is going and where the path is going. I'd be happy to do that, I just don't understand how that resolves the two questions that you've put forward.
I mean, you know, me personally, I, you know, as, as a select board, I think that we can approve and revoke anything at any time.
That's right.
You know, so I personally have no issue with saying, go ahead. You know, knowing that you're gonna have that conversation with Paul and DPW and that also, my assumption would be that we have a conversation with Historical between now and the 27th if possible, uh, to start to hopefully iron out that relationship, see if they wanna, you know, capitalize on some space. That, that to me doesn't affect the permanence either of the, of the park. But again, I am one individual, so-
Mr. Chairman, just a suggestion.
Yeah.
Invite the Historical Commission to our next meeting as well.
Yeah, I mean, if they, if they have, I mean, hopefully if the, if the Historical Commission and the Sculpture Park Committee can meet in between now and then, you know, quite frankly, I don't care who comes and, and wants to talk about it. You know, as, as long as we're, you know, working towards something.
I, I think we would need you to set up the meeting.
Oh, sure.
We'll be there.
Again, I'm happy to facilitate that.
Okay.
Um, and Mr. Runyon, I think you probably would be involved in that as well. But I mean, I can't twist anybody's arm to make the, make the vote happen tonight. So if it's the will of the board to wait until the 27th, then, then so be it. I'm assuming silence is, is understanding. So two out of three tonight? Not too bad. And we will, we'll work towards discussing further both the improvements and the relationship with Historical Commission.
Okay, well, I thank you very much for allowing us to relocate the, the sculpture Follow Your Heart and for approving the sculptures that are in front of you. I also thank you for keeping it under wraps. We would be happy to meet with Historical and I'm sure that Mr. Sagarino will report back to you about our meeting tomorrow and we will see you on the 27th.
Excellent. Barbara, actually Barbara, before you go,
Yes.
tomorrow's meeting, is that also gonna include the adjustments to the sculptures and any additional possible needs around them?
You mean for the new ones coming in?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, excellent. All right, Barbara, John, Bob, thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right, uh, let's see, we got, uh, we'll do 5:31 AMC Change of Manager.
He's on, Ryan.
It's Ryan. Ryan, you there?
Gail McClinton from Kent. Is Ryan, are you there?
Okay, he's there.
Maybe Ryan's muted? Gail, I'm sorry, you're, you're here with AMC as well?
Yes, you go right ahead, I'm with you.
Excellent, thank you. All right, gentlemen, before us, we have a change of manager. Questions, comments from the board? No, nothing?
And, uh, you know, the Alcohol Subcommittee, I, they're doing everything that's supposed to-
Yeah.
So, okay with this.
Okay. All right, um, anything else on the board? No, no? Okay, then I'll change the motion.
Make a motion to approve the change of manager for AMC movie theater.
Okay, motions are made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Five zero zero for the change of manager. Let's jump right to 5:32 AMC Extension of Hours. Uh, this is a special showing for the dates of July 7th to July 10th. I believe the new Thor movie. I believe we did this, uh, a year, two years ago, Spider-Man?
Yes.
Right, so we've done it a couple times, I think, over the last, we have. Any questions from the board? No? Okay. Seeing none, I'll continue motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion to approve AMC's extension of hours. The special showing's July 7th and 10th.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Five zero zero. All right, AMC, Gail, you're good to go. Thanks so much for hanging on with us tonight, appreciate it.
Joey Thor.
And Ryan.
Yeah.
And Ryan too.
Ryan, Ryan not involved, he's been here all night.
Very insightful.
Yeah. I meant a few words.
Right, uh, 5:33 Wegmans One Day Liquor License, come on down. Approved. Joe's just throwing out approvals now.
Nah, they've done this before.
No, I know, well, has Wegmans done the liquor license before?
Uh, no, 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 one day, I'm not, I'm not, I don't recall.
Anyways, gentlemen, please identify yourselves.
Uh, good evening, my name is Joe Devlin, I'm an attorney with, uh, actually I'm a partner at Upton, Canal and Devlin with offices at 112 Water Street in Newburyport, Mass. And also New, uh, excuse me, Boston, Mass, and also in Newburyport. Uh, Jeff Kozinski is with me, he's the general manager of Wegmans, also the manager of record. And we're here for a one-day license. And if it pleases the Chair, I can summarize-
Yeah, give us, give us the, give us the old dog-a-pony show.
So this is, um, what they're looking forward to do is a craft beer tasting, which they do inside their stores, and, and do it outside. They've done it in other stores. And they find they get more exposure and more people showing up at a, at a beer tasting. The suppliers bring the servers plus alcohol and, and, and it's a way of demonstrating, you get two-ounce shots under the statue. You can do two-ounce tastings of the, the alcohol. They're gonna do it outside, they have a cafe and the patio outside the cafe and the door from the cafe to the patio. And outside of that is a, is a lawn area. Part of it's bordered by a stone wall, then they'll enclose the rest. They'll have two Wegmans employees who are, are trained, certified through Burlington at the door, IDing people and putting a bracelet on those who are over 21. They'll have some lawn games like, um, like cornhole in that patio area. Then at the server area, they'll have another Wegmans employee just making sure that, that minors don't go into where the alcohol is being served. And they'll have, um, uh, four other Wegmans employees, you know, monitoring the service area and the, the seating area. All the suppliers will supply the servers for the beer itself and they'll all be tip certified. They plan on having this last from one to five. And they expect, I'm not sure how many you expect, but they expect, you know, 150 to 200 people over that four hours. They're gonna try to do a couple more of these, but I didn't want to do them all at once. You know, we'll apply for the next one, which I think is in early July to get on your next meeting, but this will have happened beforehand so you guys can get a taste, pun intended, of, uh, of, of what's happening. That's about it, there, oh, there's gonna be a musician there, a, a single performer.
Okay. Joe?
So, real quick, I just want to go over a couple things. You already said it's gonna be on the lawn, uh, in the area, you gotta block off the, because that, that wall doesn't go all the way, there's an open-
Right, right.
So that's all gonna be blocked off. And I'm assuming along the parking lot and the backside's gonna be blocked off, that's what it's gonna be, right?
Yeah, the only entrance exit is through the cafe.
Cafe, okay, that's number one. The other thing is, it says here, each person will be given eight tickets. Each ticket enables them to obtain two ounces, that's 16 ounces of beer, right? That's not a lot.
A pint.
For me, it's a lot, I'd be hamming right there. I don't drink. So that's the other thing. I didn't see, um, the police and the fire departments comment. Did we have those someplace? And I didn't mean to say that, I should have shut my mouth. Boy, you'll pay trouble later.
No. No, they did on the other one. I think they had already contacted police.
Okay.
That's why we didn't-
Fire.
And fire.
We reached out to fire, he sent an email back saying he didn't see a problem with it. Police, we had, uh, with Officer Outerbridge, an initial conversation. He said, I don't think you're gonna need a detail for this, but let me get back to you. I had asked my associate today before I left whether he had, she had heard back, she said, I don't think so, I called him, but she's gonna follow up with him again.
That's where I was going with this, was the detail officer for the, for that specific event. If, if they say yes, then you-
Sure, we'll do it.
If they say no, then you don't have one.
And the, uh, inspectional services, building inspector, excuse me, was there this morning, didn't have a problem.
He didn't show up, okay, all right. So other than that, I'm all set without all you guys, you're gonna be tip certified, you're gonna have two Wegmans employees in there. You gotta bring in a company that does the beer tasting, so- Good luck. If it gets good.
Mr. Spel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is for this Saturday, the 18th?
Yes.
Is that enough time to promote the event?
Uh, yeah, we, we realize it's a little short on time, but we're gonna give it our best with social media and see what we can do, uh, as a dry run. Uh, like Joe said earlier, we're looking to, uh, maybe do one in July as well, so-
Okay.
Could help us learn a little bit more.
Yeah, just clarification on the date, all set, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I, I mean, as a grocery store, they're gonna build an audience. Folks go in grocery shop and get detoured right into the beer section.
Oh, I'll be there, I'll check it out. Sounds like a good, good idea, sounds like a cool thing.
Anything else, Mike?
No, all set, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Runyon?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. There is no doubt in my mind that Wegmans will, uh, have a first-class operation down, everything they do, in my opinion, has been first-class, they've been one of the finest corporate neighbors this town has seen forever. And I'm happy to support your, uh, your event on Saturday.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I concur with Mike, top-notch operation over there, I do have one quick question. Because you have the benefit of a parking garage, if it rains, contingency plan to move it in under a-
That, that's a great question, I think we would, uh, we'd end up canceling if it rains.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Beanbag, you're gonna get it.
Good idea, though.
Yes, future, future.
Yeah, Jeff is a little familiar with running events in the garage, in the parking garage. No, that was only your only question.
Okay. Uh, my only question pertains to the diagram, gentlemen. The games area, will folks be able to move from the vendors' tables area to the games area with two-ounce glasses of beer?
Yes, it's all one, one area, uh, that's secluded, uh, off from the general public, that you have to come through the cafe. So, uh, we wouldn't be promoting kids to go over there and play any type of games or anything like that.
Okay, great. All right, uh, well then, there's no further questions from me.
I will make a motion to approve a one-day liquor license at Wegmans, uh, on Saturday, June 18th.
June 1st.
Yeah, that day too.
It says June.
It says June.
It's June.
It is June, oh, see, my thing says July.
You're right, it does.
I'm sorry, go ahead, my bad.
Making the motion, me, you?
That's why I did the date.
Wanted to make sure we were doing it right the first time.
That's why I clarified the date, I was like, July 18th, Monday night, and I was like-
2022 from one to five, does it say one more time? It does, no time there, no.
Second.
This is just doing it all day.
Seconded.
All right, motion's been made and seconded for June 18th from one to five. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Five zero zero, gentlemen, good luck, good luck.
Thank you very much.
See you Saturday. I'll see you Saturday, I'll be there.
As soon as it came out of my mouth, I was like, well, you just said this Saturday, you schmo. Like, I wasn't even thinking. No, I'm a schmo.
The next one isn't until July 18th, so if you are planning that, needs to get on June 27th.
Right, no, that's, that's what we're looking at.
All right.
Thank you, good luck.
Gentlemen, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Good luck. Uh, all right, so 5:34 Common Craft One Day Liquor License. Hiding behind that TV all night long. He's been here the whole time.
Yes, I have.
Just opened for crying out loud, didn't you?
Yes, we did, a couple weeks ago.
Floor is yours, please identify yourself and, uh, take it away.
Great, uh, thanks for having me, my name is Larry LeBlitz, owner of Common Craft. And, um, before you to, uh, ask for permission to have a couple of themed events starting, um, this summer and carrying on into the fall.
And what, what type of events, you trying to, talk to us about the events?
Oh, okay, uh, yeah, so I'm, I'm proposing, um, three different events. Uh, two of them are tiki's, um, uh, tiki summer Sundays, uh, two events for that. Uh, one in July and one in August. The third event will be an Oktoberfest, uh, event. And I'm, uh, interested in, in utilizing the green space in front of Common Craft, which is, um, mall property. And blocking that off, um, with fencing and stanchions to, uh, create a, um, a larger themed area. Uh, I've outlined in, in some of the proposal materials, uh, some of the details of the event. Um, and I'm happy to go forward with that as well. Or if you've already familiarized with yourself, I can answer questions.
Okay, let's, uh, let's take it to questions. Joe, Alcohol Subcommittee?
So this will be the first time you've done this, right? You, you haven't done one before, you just opened up, right?
Uh, correct.
Or have you done it at different?
Yeah. Uh, I'm sorry?
Is this your only store?
Uh, so I, I, I own other restaurants, I'm, I'm, I'm well-versed at, at, at planning, um, planning themed events and, and events, catered events of that sort. So I'm happy to answer questions as far as the details or the thought process.
Well, we just heard from, from the other company, they're gonna give out two-ounce samples of beer and stuff like that, what are you doing for that? Because I don't-
So, so we won't be giving out anything. Uh, what we'll be doing is, um, having a themed event or a party per se, which would, um, so for Oktoberfest, it would be, uh, a traditional Oktoberfest setting with, um, an Oompa band that would be playing. Uh, patrons would come and celebrate the, um, the German-themed event uh, by purchasing beers from our already active bars. The beers will be highlighting, will be, uh, special limited-release brews from the producers that, that make the beers. There'll be some pomp and circumstance, obviously, with the, uh, the band playing, uh, costume contests, some traditional beer garden or beer, um, Oktoberfest, uh, beer-themed games such as, um, uh, Steinholding contest where people hold a, a Stein with a straight arm in a circle and the last one to, um, to be able to hold their arm wins, wins a prize, which would be, uh, a gift card or some other, um, community, um, raffle-type sponsored event. Like to have, um, some food offerings that would extend out from our already permitted kitchen and, um, create some of that, um, just, um, you know, fun, fun afternoon of, um, of Oktoberfest.
So you're just looking at three events, two tikes and a, and an Oktoberfest. Your regular business hours, you're not gonna open any, any later, you're just looking to put them more outside?
Co- correct, I'm, I'm looking to create, to expand our patio area
Yeah.
uh, with the, um, fencing into the green space and beyond, uh, touching the sidewalk.
Mall's okay with this?
Uh, the mall is okay with that and there's a letter, um, in the packet highlighting and outlining their approval for such events, in fact-
If that's the case, my friend, listen, we're all about business, so I'm gonna say yes to this. Um, I wish you the best of luck.
Okay.
We'll see how the first one goes, and if something happens, we'll just deny the other two.
All right.
We'll deny, we'll, we'll, I don't know if we will or not, but I'm on board for all three of them.
Okay, great.
Mr. Spel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hi Larry.
Hey. Hey.
Big fan of Common Craft, I've been a couple of times.
Oh, wonderful, thank you.
Love it. Um, just a question, I know that you're gonna use your little courtyard area there in the front, and you want to expand it to the green park area. How are you gonna distinguish, um, or kinda, is there gonna be, you said a fence? What type of fence or barrier will be, um, kind of making that line of demarcation between?
Right.
Event area and out the public, because we all, obviously, don't want people Oktoberfest-ing out in the parking lot.
Right.
How you, what are we gonna do? What kind of setup?
Good question, thanks for asking that. Um, so, the, the fencing material is to be determined, I have a meeting scheduled at the Simon Property Group. They're either going to, um, purchase a, a fence, um, invest in some stanchion material, or a fence rental. I think it's probably gonna be option one, just based on aesthetics, um, knowing what some of these rental fences look like. I know that they're, they're very, um, particular about, about how fencing would work in, in a, in an environment like this. So, I'm happy to get back to you with exactly what that'll look like in the fencing material. Um, but I'm well-aware that there needs to be a bona fide fence in place that would prevent people from leaving the space, just like there is a, a fence for the patio that would prohibit them from going to the green space today.
Yeah.
And then, um, I'm sorry, and then, to further give you clarity, there is a, um, uh, an exit door, an egress door from our current fence that would take you into the green space. That would be propped open, which would create a, an open area to get from the new green space for this temporary event, uh, into the Common Craft space to, um, to connect the restaurant to the, this, the green space.
Thanks, Larry. Um, another question, are you gonna have a staff member kind of policing the, the fence and area and always have someone keep an eye on that? Because again, when alcohol's involved, I just wanna be sure.
Sure, sure, sure.
That we keep the party where the party is and not, you know, let it spread out into the... Because that park is pretty long, it goes in front of Fogo, then around the corner, as you know, so...
Oh, well, no, no, it, it wouldn't go that far down Fogo. Um, the delineation would be at the, um, the rent lease line of where my space is, that connects to the next space that is yet to be rented. So it would stop well before Fogo, it would, um, if, um, if you can imagine that green space, it's, um, it's the size of a bocce ball court per se. And then stops, and then concrete and planting start into the next space, then there's a corridor for the mall entrance, and then Fogo's space starts. So, um, based on, you know, my, my cartoon drawing, the, the fence would really just go from the, the, the end of our rentable space of the restaurant, a straight line towards the sidewalk.
Okay, so you don't have the whole, the whole green, just in front of your, your building?
Right, correct. And, um, and I, I've made calls to, um, to the police department to find out as far as, uh, police detailing, as well as, um, the, um, the fire department. And I have records of contacting those individuals, um, with, um, um, Detective Keith Shepherd, who, who no longer does that. And I contacted Officer David, uh, but he was on vacation, so I'll, I'll follow up with him this week. And, um, spoke to Lieutenant McAsp, McAnasp, sorry if I spell his, pronounce his name wrong. Um, and he directed me to the Chief of Fire, um, Michael Patterson, which I sent an email to him as well, outlining the, uh, the specifications.
Okay, yeah, if you could just get us the information on the fencing and?
Sure.
Make sure our police, uh, are, are okay with it, that's my only issue.
Okay.
But other than that, I think it's great, great idea, very cool. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely, Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, um, I gotta get my rear end down there and visit, uh, your location. Haven't done that yet, so I'm a little unfamiliar with your drawings and so on and so forth, but, um... Did you, did Subcommittee meet with them, or is you just sort of going from the backup material presented?
Going from the backup material.
All right, well, I'm not gonna throw a wrench in anything, but we'll, um, I do have to get down there. Wednesday event? I'll be down there.
So, the three events, one, one's in, uh, June, one's July, and Oktoberfest will be at the end of September, um, approval permitting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, uh, Mr. Tigges?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is all the food and alcohol being served inside and people coming outside?
Uh, so for, so for the tiki event, there will be a, um, a tiki cart. Which, um, which will dispense some, uh, some beverages, it's a, um, it's a, you know, a wooden cart with, um, with, with hay and, and kind of, um, kitschy in nature. And that will dispense some of the tiki beverages, however, with the fencing in place, it'll allow you to still get a beverage inside Common Craft and come out to the outside space. The food that I'm looking to set up there will augment our, our current menu offerings with more themed appropriate food items. So while we'll have our current restaurant menu available, there'll be, um, uh, more themed appropriate foods, such as, um, like a pig roast or, um, that nature for the tiki event. And then a, um, a German-inspired, um, food plate, including, uh, bratwurst and, um, and cabbage, um, pretzel, potato salad, that sort of thing. So utilizing the food setup as, as a way to, um, augment the, um, the facilitation of the service. And back to your original part of asking for the beverage dispensing, so I, I outlined the, uh, the tiki cart for Oktoberfest. All of the beverages will be, will be serviced through our existing bars within Common Craft.
Just one little quick question, uh, any contingency if it rains?
Um, yeah, so contingency for the tiki would probably be to cancel it. And, um, to, the contingency for, um, Oktoberfest would be to move the band inside and, and get a, um, uh, tenting, tenting outside. So, kinda looking to make that, make that play, uh, make that call as it gets closer.
Okay. So because you're serving food, is there any seating outside?
Uh, the only seating that we have is on our patio, um, there won't be any seating on the green space. I did connect with the, um, Director of Border Health and, and let her know of our plans. Um, and, uh, protocol following, um, all food service, um, um, rules and regulations, so I'm gonna keep her abreast of, of, of the food menu that we do. But she's, she's aware of, of that as well.
Okay, but you will not be adding any additional seating to what's already outside?
We, we will not, no, correct.
Okay. In terms of the entrance, so I'm, you know, I'm just trying to understand this, and I haven't been down there, so I apologize. I'm looking at the drawing that you provided, that, that the dotted line that goes out to the sidewalk and back around with an entrance and exit. Now, right now, I'm looking at the Oktoberfest one, but I don't think that they're too different. Does this encompass the main entrance of the mall?
No, no, no.
So this, this exit here that I'm seeing in between the seating and these other doors down here, that's, that's all your entrance?
Um, yeah, yeah, so I'm, I'm not sure if I'm, I'm, I'm seeing exactly what you're seeing, but where, where I wrote entrance-exit would be the, um, the temporary fencing that would, that would follow the, um, that would go parallel to the sidewalk. And then it ends at a, um, a brick wall, which is already in place.
Okay, so, so that, that black box, which I assume is the brick wall, the little exit that I see just a little left of that, is the exit to your establishment?
Oh, all right, so, I'm sorry, so what you're, what you're referencing, I believe, if I'm, if I'm looking at the same thing correctly, that's the existing, um, that's the existing, um, space of the restaurant. And you can kinda see the, um, the, the tic-tac-toe patterns indicating the cobblestone which are there. And then the patio to the left of that, which is the current outside patio. The, the place that I wrote in green space is, is the, um, artificial turf. And the space to the right of the green space is a, um, is, continues on with the cobblestones which go right to the sidewalk.
So the, the cobblestone area where I see the exit and the doors?
Yes.
What is that?
That is, currently is just all cobblestone from the exit arrow all the way to the sidewalk right now.
Right, but where do those doors go?
Oh, the, the doors are the doors to the restaurant right now.
Okay, so that's how you get into the restaurant?
I'm sorry, yeah, you know, you know, I tried to get a better, like, Google view of this, however, it hasn't been updated since Sears was there, so I wasn't able to get an aerial view.
Okay. Again, I, I, I haven't been down there, and I, I remember approving it, but I, I don't remember how it all lays out, so that's fine. And the mall's okay with the noise, like, we talk about the, the Oktoberfest, like, the, the band and everything, they're good with that?
They have a letter.
Okay, all right. Okay, I, you know, I, I feel like with October being so far away that we should, and this is just, you know, me, we should approve the tiki ones, see how they go. Um, and then come back for Oktoberfest, but again, this is just, you know, me. Otherwise, I don't think I have any other questions or comments, I'm just putting them out there for the board's consideration.
So, Mr. Bourger, I, the, the Oompa bands book up very quickly, in fact, um, I have to keep one on hold, um, until this meeting. Um, there's such a demand from Oktoberfest, I, I really need to, to book this now. So I can understand if, if, if it was unruly that you would deny my, um, my event for Oktoberfest, but I'd, I'd really appreciate the, the approval tonight.
I'll make a motion for you, Mr. Chairman, that may satisfy you. I'd like to make a motion to approve, um, all three one-day liquor licenses for Common Craft. Uh, July seventeenth, August seventh, and Oktoberfest on September twenty-fourth, with the contingencies that if anything were to happen, um, that was not, um, amenable. The first two nights, we could come back, ask you to come back and work on ways to rectify it. And also, I wanna make sure that the, um, that barrier is approved by our police, uh, representatives.
Second.
All right, motion's been made in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Five zero zero.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry.
All right, Paul, uh, five thirty-five, discussion update on opioid settlement.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to give the board a little bit of an update. Uh, several years ago, uh, the town signed on to a class-action lawsuit against pharmaceutical, uh, companies, uh, that were deemed responsible, uh, for the opioid crisis. Several years later now, we're finally, uh, hearing back that that was, has been a successful lawsuit, all the cases were combined. Attorney General for the State of Massachusetts also got involved, and, uh, we've been notified, uh, that we're gonna receive a total over a period of time of close to six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Uh, probably in annual payments of between thirty-five and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, the document I provided for you in your packet is just some ideas as to how those funds can be spent. Um, we'll also be reaching out to the most impacted departments that you would think of, Police Department, Youth and Family Services, just to see, uh, what their ideas are. Uh, but the important thing about these funds is that, um, we can't just use it to offset the cost of a, of a service that we're already providing. Um, as you know, we already have, um, employees that are working in these fields within the town, so we can't just take the money and say, hey, you know, we'll pay, um, Karen's salary over at the Police Department. We need to, to supplement, uh, the service that we're providing, uh, with the use of the funds, so... Look, interested to hear any ideas that the board may have, but it's, uh, you know, pretty good, it was a long process, and, uh, at the end of it, we have, uh, some funds that we can work, uh, to offset the impacts of the opioid crisis. So, look forward to hearing any ideas the board may have.
Okay, uh, gentlemen, any discussion, questions, comments?
Quick question.
Sure.
Uh, Paul, the timing on this, when do we get it, and when do we have to, have any answer of how we're gonna spend it? You, you're looking for ideas?
Yeah, they, uh, they had led us to believe that the first payment may be forthcoming relatively shortly, uh, but that doesn't mean that we have to go spend it the next day. Um, so, I think that we have time to, to come up with some ideas.
So there is no time, so we don't lose it if we don't spend it right away?
Yeah, there may be eventually, once the payments start rolling, but at this present point in time, I don't think we're in any danger of running out of time.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple things come up to, come, come up, uh, up top my head quickly, uh, reimbursement for, for Narcan and, uh, things like that, that we've, uh, dispensed in the previously, um, prevention programs, um, as you, uh, you know, we gotta get it, we gotta get in the schools. As you know, you're gonna get these kids at the, uh, it's sad to say, but you're gonna get them down at the elementary program, so I would encourage us to work with, say, Youth and Family, Police Department, whatever other resources we have, and try and make, try and get a program where we can actually have a boots-on-the-ground in those, in the school and, um, get to them early enough, hopefully. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Paul, thank you for the update, appreciate it. All right, uh, Subcommittee reports, gentlemen, uh, Jim?
Uh, what about for doing the minutes?
Oh, jeez Louise, my gosh, just jumping over stuff. Sorry, five thirty-six, approval of the minutes. Uh, we got, uh, regular meetings for April twenty-fifth, May ninth, May twenty-third, and a strategic planning meeting for May eighteenth.
Well, seeing you went to me, I'll make a motion to approve minutes for April twenty-fifth, May ninth, May twenty-third, and strategic planning meeting of April, uh, May eighteen.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Five zero zero to approve the minutes. Now we'll go to Subcommittee reports. Go ahead, you can...
Uh, from the Fire Chief, last week, the, uh, entire department participated in training at Station Two. It was fire engine pump training, a company called FDSS was hired, they came out, conducted the training, and a member of that company worked with each member of the department at the truck panel. And ran it through several different type of hu- uh, pump oper- operating revolutions and, and got them all trained, and got them all trained on that and retrained on that. Uh, the newest member of the Fire Department, John O'Leary, completed his department orientation, and he's been assigned to a group. And with the Fourth of July right around the corner, remember, uh, remember to, that fireworks are illegal in the Commonwealth of America. And the unauthorized use of fireworks can lead to both serious fires and injuries. That's it.
Mike?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I hope, I'm not gonna step on Joe's toes when I talk about, we took a tour recently of the, uh, currently under, under-construction DPW facility on Meadow Road, Phase Two of our, um, facilities, uh, DPW facilities. Renewal program, or whatever you call it, but anyhow, fact of the matter is, the, the project is, is, uh, on time, on budget, and in fact, it probably, you'd even look to us as if it was actually a little bit ahead of schedule, they're talking September, we'd kinda thinking, look at more, look at more, uh, ready before that, which would be a great thing. I have everything in place before the snow flies over there. Just a beautiful facility, absolute gorgeous facility, a one-hundred percent improvement from what the employees, um, uh, were working with for, for quite some time, and, and, uh, well-deserved for them. So very, uh, um, modern, um, conveniences that they, they rightfully deserve, and, uh, they should all be, uh, very happy and more productive. But I'm, but I'm sure they're gonna enjoy it, and I wanted to thank Mr. Sanchez for, and Tom Hayes for the, um, wonderful, uh, tour of the facility, and explained everything quite nicely to us. Thank you.
Absolutely. Joe?
Say now. No, it was, I agree with Mike, Mike, it was, it was great, uh, what I will talk about is, uh, um, the cops and cars on, on Saturday, so that was a, a really good event. Um, I got there, drove by in the morning at nine o'clock, I, by the time I got back, it was one, and half the cars were already gone, so... But I would like to, uh, put a big shout-out to Mrs. Schipoletti for, uh, keeping the cars all organized, uh, there's no trash, uh, place was spotless clean when everybody left. He raised quite a bit of money with the amount of cars that were there, so, uh, a big shout-out to Mrs. Schipoletti on that, and there was quite a few nice cars there, you know?
Yeah.
That's all I got.
All right, Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have a bunch of apologies in advance, just wanna echo, uh, my colleague, Mr. Ryan and Marini's comments, both on the new DPW building. I spent half the day with, uh, Mr. Sanchez and Mr. Tom Hayes doing a tour of all our DPW facilities last week. And I was able to, even though I missed our official tour, I was able to see the new building, and it's really awesome, so, kudos to everyone involved, looks great. And also, kudos to, uh, Bernie Schipoletti for what a great event on Saturday on the Common. Uh, he said there were over a hundred and sixty cars that he had, and at that point, they were still coming in. So it was just an awesome event, great time had by all, and it was all for a great cause, people helping people. Um, about a week and a half ago, Selectman Tigges and I did meet with our Community Response Team, which is led by Christine at Youth and Family Services. And what they do is, they are a collaboration of a lot of our departments in town, uh, Marge McDonald, Fire, uh, Schools, Police, about, talking about mental health issues. And we just went to kinda hear what they do, kind of an informational session, and to offer, um, our support as a board, so we told them strongly, anything we can do to help, um, them to let us know. Uh, on Sunday, it was a big weekend in Burlington for great events. Fortunate enough to attend the eighth Korean Council General Cup, which is a Taekwondo championship. And it was at Marshall Simons in the gym, and I was blown away at the event. There were over three hundred competitors, um, there, there were dignitaries from Korea, actually representing their National Taekwondo Association. And our own Boston Council General to Korea, uh, Kim John Yu was in attendance. Uh, it was a great event, fully well-attended, uh, you could barely walk in that gym. Uh, it was cool to see all the, the families and, and competitors out, all the way from three-years-old all the way up to the twenties. It was a, just a really great event, and people remarked, um, everyone was asking, what was going on at the middle school, because there were so many cars if you went by anytime Sunday. And there were so many people there, that was a really packed event. Uh, last one I have is, um, starting this Thursday, the fifteenth, and June twenty-second at Grand U Farm, our Police Department is gonna have community forums. Um, everyone knows about the, uh, recent school shootings, uh, that have happened. And Chief Brown has organized these community forums for residents to come out and discuss, um, what we're doing to protect our schools, uh, the police response, and he's there to answer any questions or field any comments or concerns that any of our residents may have. I think this is a great, uh, piece of outreach from the Police Department. Again, they are this Thursday, and a week from Thursday, the fifteenth and twenty-second, at Grand U Farm at seven PM. And they're just asking that you register with Sergeant Kirschner, uh, via email, and that's T. Kirschner at BPD.org, just to make sure we have enough room for everyone to attend. So, I'll be attending both, and I think it's a great thing, and hopefully, people come out if they are concerned about our safety for our schools. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Awesome, thank you.
They're on Wednesdays.
Okay, I was gonna say, that fifteenth is not a Thursday, so it's either Thursday or Wednesday.
No, it's two Wednesdays.
Two Wednesdays.
Oh, it's two Wednesdays?
Yeah.
Sorry, two Wednesdays.
Two consecutive Wednesdays.
Okay, fifteenth and twenty-second is correct, then.
Anyone watching, uh, it's Wednesdays.
Wednesday's starting this Wednesday.
Yeah, my gosh, yeah. All right, Chairman's report, uh, just a couple of things. Um, I wanna call out, uh, both, uh, the Burlington Rec Department, as well as our corporate, uh, neighbor, the, the Burlington Marriott, uh, for putting on and hosting the Daddy Daughter Dance. I had the, uh, pleasure of attending with my two daughters, and it was a blast, uh, just a great time. Jack Farren, uh, you know, uh, the, the kind of, his heart, uh, DJ'd for us, and, uh, everyone had an absolute blast. Um, I also wanna echo everyone's sentiments around cops and cars, we had the opportunity to be down there this weekend. You know, Bernie did a great job organizing all of those vehicles, so many cool things, uh, from vintage cars all the way to, there was, uh, uh, Kit, the Knight Rider car, and the DeLorean from Back to the Future, just super cool, if you didn't get a chance to go down. You know, I wanna take a moment and just shout-out all of the recent graduates. Uh, you know, the last couple of years have been an absolute mess for these kids. Um, and anyone graduating high school in the last couple of years, uh, is really putting in extra work, uh, to, you know, really, you know, make their mark. uh, is really putting in extra work, uh, to, you know, really, you know, make their mark and succeed, uh, in their schooling, so just a huge kudos to, to all of you, um, as you, as you graduate and move on to that next step in your, in your lives. Um, with summer approaching, uh, and the heat rising, please keep an eye out for your neighbors, um, you know, uh, for small pets, uh, small, any pet really, uh, just keep an eye out, please, with, you know, temperatures get hot, uh, and people don't really quite realize, um, so just, you know, keep, keep an eye out, be, be a good community member. Um, we've been talking about it for a decent part of tonight, but, uh, June is Pride Month, so I wanna make everyone very aware of that. Um, the Fourth of July Parade is a-coming, we're back in full force this year, um, so mark it on your calendars, it's a Monday or a Tuesday this year, um, so, you know, get your lawn chairs ready, um, to come out, uh, it's gonna be a great time. Um, and then lastly, you know, I said it a couple times tonight, um, you know, we're coming off of a town election this past April where there were a lot of just vacant seats open for a lot of different things, you know, we're appointing a lot of folks, uh, you know, please, please get involved, uh, you know, the, the, how town government functions is a byproduct of its community, so, you know, you, you wanna, you know, get your foot in the door in a subcommittee or a town meeting or someplace, get your voice heard, uh, please. Um, other than that, Paul, to you for Town Administrators Report.
Uh, for the sake of, uh, all the Celtic fans out there, I don't have much to add. But everybody covered all my material anyway, so I have nothing for you tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, gentlemen? Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Fi- uh, opposed? Abstain? Five zero zero. Good night, everybody.